Welcome to your City Council meeting. We welcome your interest and involvement in the city's legislative process. This agenda includes information about topics coming before the City Council and the action recommended by city staff. You can read about each topic in the staff reports, which are available on the city website and in the office of the city clerk. The city clerk is also available to answer any questions you have about City Council meeting procedures. Participation if you would like to provide comments to the City Council, please, fill out a Blue Speaker Request Form, located at the back table. Submit the form to the city clerk before the item begins. When it's your turn, the city clerk will call your name and invite you to the podium. Speakers generally have three minutes, unless the presiding officer, usually the mayor, changes that time. Reasonable accommodations in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. If you are a person with a disability and you need a disability-related modification or accommodation to participate in this meeting, please contact the city clerk's office at (916) 461-6035, (916) 355-7328, fax, or city clerk department at folsom.ca.us. Requests must be made as early as possible and at least two full business days before the start of the meeting. How to Watch the City of Folsom provides three ways to watch a City Council meeting: In person, online, on TV City Council meetings take place at City Hall, 50, Natoma Street. Watch the live stream and replay past meetings on the city website (www.folsom.ca.us). Watch live and replays of meetings on SAC Metro Cable TV, Channel 14. More information about City Council meetings is available at the end of this agenda. One City Council (Regular Meeting) Folsom City Hall City Council Chambers (1st Floor 50, Natoma Street, Folsom, California), 95630, www.folsom.ca.us. Tuesday, August 12, 2025, 6:30pm Mike Koslowski, Councilmember Justin Rathal, Vice Mayor Sarah Aquino, Mayor Barbara Leary, Councilmember Anna Rohrbau, Councilmember Agenda Call to Order Roll Call Councilmembers: Leary, Rathal, Rohrbau, Koslowski, Aquino The City Council has adopted a policy that no new item will begin after 10:30pm. Therefore, if you are here for an item that has not been heard by 10:30pm, you may leave, as the item will be continued to a future council meeting. Pledge of Allegiance Agenda Update Business from the Floor Members of the public are entitled to address the City Council concerning any item within the Folsom City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are generally limited to no more than three minutes. Except for certain specific exceptions, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Scheduled Presentations One City of Folsom Resolution of Commendation Honoring Folsom American Little League 1-0-U All-Stars II Presentation on Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025-02 Informational Update II Consent Calendar Items appearing on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by one motion. Councilmembers may pull an item for discussion. Three Approval of the July 8, 2025 Special and Regular Meeting Minutes Four Approval of the July 23, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes Five Resolution Number 11415-A Resolution Accepting a Grant of $65,000 from the Urban Area Security Initiative (UASI) for the Police Department and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Peregrine Technologies for $64,000 for a real-time decision and operations management platform and appropriation of funds in the General Fund (Fund 010-6). Resolution Number 11436-A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Amendment Number Two to the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District Licensing Agreement No E32015006 Extending the Term of the Agreement for an Additional Five Years Seven Resolution Number 11437-A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement with NTU Technologies (Inc.) for $387,000 from the Water Operating Fund (Fund 520) for the purchase of chemicals for the water treatment plan eight Resolution Number 11439-A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement with Mars Company for $198,875 from the Water Operating Fund (Fund 520) for a software license and maintenance subscription for the meter test bench nine Resolution Number 11441-A Resolution Receiving Report from the Community Development Department on the Approval of a Parcel Map Waiver for the Russell Ranch Phase Two (Village 5) Project Ten Resolution Number 11444-A Resolution Approving the Donation of Specified Pieces of the Original Folsom Kids Play Castle Park Play Structure to Folsom Kids Play (For Generations) Inc. 11 Resolution No. 11446-A Resolution Accepting $67,371 in Department of Homeland Security Grant Funds awarded through the California Office of Emergency Services and Appropriation of Funds in the General Fund (Fund 010-12) Resolution Number 11448-A Resolution Rejecting All Bids for the Bidwell Street Storm Drain Replacement Project (Project #2499) New Business 13 Ordinance Number 1355 An Ordinance of the City of Folsom Adding Chapter 8.39 Unlawful Behavioral Nuisances to the Folsom Municipal Code to Prevent, Remove, and Abate Behavioral Nuisances That Negatively Affect People, Properties, and Businesses in the Community Introduction and First Reading 314 California Department of Transportation Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program for a Sustainable Transit Connections to Health Services Planning and Feasibility Study Contract C Resolution Number 11442-A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Folsom and the Sacramento Regional Transit District regarding the Sustainable Transit Connections to Health Services Planning and Feasibility Study II Resolution Number 11443-A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with Fair and Peers for a Sustainable Transit Connections to Health Services Planning and Feasibility Study Contract City Manager Reports Council Comments Adjournment Notice Members of the public are entitled to directly address the City Council concerning any item that is described in the notice of this meeting, before or during consideration of that item. If you wish to address Council on an issue, which is on this agenda, please complete a Blue Speaker Request Card, and deliver it to a staff member at the table on the left side of the Council Chambers prior to discussion of the item. When your name is called, stand to be recognized by the mayor and then proceed to the podium. If you wish to address the City Council on any other item of interest to the public, when the mayor asks if there is any business from the floor, follow the same procedure described above. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Notice Regarding Challenges to Decisions Pursuant to all applicable laws and regulations, including without limitation, California Government Code Section 65,009 and/or California Public Resources Code Section 21,177, if you wish to challenge in court any of the above decisions, regarding planning, zoning and/ or environmental decisions, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, s, described in this notice/agenda, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at, or prior to, the public hearing. As Presiding Officer, the mayor has the authority to preserve order at all City Council meetings, to remove or cause the removal of any person from any such meeting for disorderly conduct, or for making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, using profanity, or becoming boisterous, threatening or personally abusive while addressing said council, and to enforce the rules of the council. Persons interested in proposing an item for the City Council agenda should contact a member of the City Council. This meeting of the City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cablecast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse Cable System, and will be shown in its entirety on the Friday and Saturday following the meeting, both at 9:00am. The recording will also be video streamed at Metro 14 Live.SACC County.Government The City does not control scheduling of this telecast and persons interested in watching the televised meeting should confirm this schedule with Metro Cable TV, Channel 14. The City of Folsom provides live and archived webcasts of regular City Council meetings. The webcasts can be found on the online services page of the city's website (www.folsom.ca.us). In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, if you are a person with a disability and you need a disability-related modification or accommodation to participate in this meeting, please contact the City 4 Clerk's Office at (916) 461-6035, (916) 355-7328, fax, or city clerk department at folsom.ca.us. Requests must be made as early as possible and at least two full business days before the start of the meeting. Any documents produced by the city and distributed to the City Council regarding any item on this agenda will be made available at the city clerk's counter at City Hall located at 50, Natoma Street, Folsom, California and at the Folsom Public Library located at 411, Stafford Street, Folsom, California during normal business hours. Five This page is intentionally left blank to facilitate double-sided printing and minimize paper use. Six Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date August 12, 2025 Agenda Section Scheduled Presentations Subject Presentation on Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025-02 Informational Update From Parks and Recreation Department Background/Issue The Parks and Recreation Department will provide a brief schedule update for the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District No. 2025-02. The presentation will be delivered by Derek Perez, Municipal Landscape Services Manager. Recommendation/City Council Action No action is requested of the City Council at this time. Submitted Kelly Gonzalez, Parks and Recreation Director 1 File 034-2125-001 Folsom City Council Minutes July 8, 2025 City Council Special Meeting Minutes Tuesday, July 8, 2025, 5pm Call to Order The Special City Council Meeting was called to order at 5pm with Mayor Aquino presiding. Roll Call Councilmembers Present Michael Koslowski, Councilmember Barbara Leary, Councilmember Justin Rathal, Vice Mayor Anna Rohrbau, Councilmember Sarah Aquino, Mayor Councilmembers Absent None Adjournment to Closed Session for the Following Purposes One Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D One Kristi R. Smith, Marion Cassidy, and George R. Smith, Jr. VJM Manufacturing Company[778.62][778.62](INC), ETA L., Alameda County Superior Court Case No. 24CV0893132 Conference with Labor Negotiator Pursuant to Government Code Section 54,957.6 Agency Negotiator Vance Piggott Employee Organization Various Bargaining Groups Motion by Councilmember Koslowski, second by Vice Mayor Rathal to adjourn to closed session. Motion passed by the following Roll Call Vote Eyes Nose Absent Abstain Koslowski Leary Rathal Rohrbau Aquino None 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 Reconvene City Attorney Stephen Wong announced that no final action was taken during closed session. Adjournment Draft Not Official Until Approved by the City Council Page 1 File 034-2125-001 Folsom City Council Minutes July 8, 2025 There being no further business to come before the City Council, the meeting was adjourned at 6:32pm Submitted by attest underscore 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 Resolution Number 11434-A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with Kim Lee Horn &amp; Associates in the Amount of $29,640 for Construction Engineering Support Services, to be funded by Fund 472 Folsom Plan Area Capital Fund Resolution Number 11434-A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with Pinnacle Project Management in the Amount of $99,000 for Construction Management Services, to be funded by Fund 472 Folsom Plan Area Capital Fund Motion by Councilmember Koslowski, second by Councilmember Leary to approve the Consent Calendar Item NOS 3 to 10 and 12 to 15 Motion passed by the following Roll Call Vote Eyes Nose Absent Abstain Koslowski Leary Rathal Rohrbau Aquino None 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 Pulled for Discussion Eleven Resolution Number 11421-A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement with Kim Lee Horn &amp; Associates (INC) for Design Consulting Services for $242,580 from the Light Rail Impact Fee Fund (Fund 451) for the Traffic Signal Timing and Logic Statements for Light Rail Preemption Project (Project #8084) An Appropriation of Funds Draft Not Official Until Approved by City Council Page 3 File 034-2125-001 Folsom City Council Minutes July 8, 2025 Councilmember Leary pulled this item regarding complaints about a dysfunction between the alignment of the traffic lights and the light rail arms. Public Works Department Senior Civil Engineer Zach Bosch responded. Motion by Mayor Aquino, second by Vice Mayor Rathal to approve Resolution Number 11421. Motion passed by the following Roll Call Vote Eyes Nose Absent Abstain Koslowski Leary Rathal Rohrbau Aquino None 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 Public Hearing Sixteen Resolution Number 11425-A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom approving and confirming the report of delinquent utilities charges and requesting Sacramento County to collect such charges on the tax roll Finance Department Revenue Services Manager Elizabeth Hannah made a presentation. Mayor Aquino opened the public hearing at 6:57pm Hearing no speakers, the public hearing was closed. Motion by Vice Mayor Rathal, second by Councilmember Koslowski to approve Resolution Number 11425. Motion passed by the following Roll Call Vote Eyes Nose Absent Abstain Koslowski Leary Rathal Rohrbau Aquino None 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 City Attorney Stephen Wong confirmed that the motion included the updated and revised chart attached to the resolution. Seventeen Resolution Number 11431-A Resolution Approving the Final Engineers Report Confirming the Diagrams and Assessments, and ordering the Continued Levying of Assessments for Maintenance and Servicing of Improvements Within the City of Folsom Landscaping and Lighting Districts for Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026 for American River Canyon North American River Canyon North Number 2 American River Canyon North Number 3 Blue Ravine Oaks Blue Ravine Oaks Number 2 Briggs Ranch Broadstone Broadstone Number 4 Broadstone Unit Number 3 Cobble Ridge Cobble Hills Ridge 2/Reflections 2 Folsom Heights Folsom Heights Number 2 Hanaford Cross Lake Natoma Shores Los Saros Natoma Station Natoma Valley Prairie Oaks Ranch Prairie Oaks Ranch Number 2 Prospect Ridge Sierra Estates Silverbrook Staple Chase The Residences at American River Canyon The Residences at American River Canyon 2 Willow Creek Estates East Willow Creek Estates East Number 2 Willow Creek Estates South And Willow Springs Parks and Recreation Department Municipal Landscape Manager Derek Perez made a presentation and responded to questions from the City Council. City Manager Brian Witameer also responded to questions from the City Council. Draft not official until approved by City Council Page 4 File 034-2125-001 Folsom City Council Minutes July 8, 2025 Mayor Aquino opened the public hearing at 7:04pm Hearing no speakers, the public hearing was closed. Motion by Councilmember Koslowski, second by Councilmember Leary to approve Resolution Number 11431. Motion passed by the following Roll Call Vote Eyes Nose Absent Abstain Koslowski Leary Rathal Rohrbau Aquino None 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 Old Business Eighteen Resolution Number 11387-A Resolution Amending Resolution Number 8792 with the Adoption of an Updated Community Facility Rental Fee Schedule with the Implementation of a Rental Fee Schedule on October 1, 2025, and Authorizing Staff to Increase Fees Up to a Maximum of 10% Annually Until Equal to the Comparable Rates in the Region and as the Market Allows, Continued from May 27, 2025 Parks and Recreation Department Recreation and Community Services Manager Tom Hellman made a presentation and responded to questions from the City Council. City Attorney Stephen Wong clarified charges of public services. Parks and Recreation Director Kelly Gonzalez also responded to questions from the City Council. City Attorney Stephen Wong further clarified that Page 875 of the Agenda Packet includes City Manager Brian Witamier further responded. Motion by Vice Mayor Rathal. Second by Councilmember Leary to approve resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-three. Motion passed by the following roll call vote, eyes, knows, absent, abstain, Kozlowski, Leary, Rathal, Roorbau, Aquino none 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 twenty-one. Resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-seven. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Folsom approving the Affordable Housing Loan Program Guidelines to establish a clear framework for providing financial assistance to affordable housing projects. Funded by Folsom Housing Fund. Fund two hundred and thirty-eight. And Housing Trust Fund. Fund two hundred and twenty-one. Mayor Aquino announced that this item is being continued to a future city council meeting. Twenty-two resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-eight. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with the Folsom Historic District Association for operation and management of public spaces in the Folsom Historic District Parks and Recreation Department Recreation and Community Services Manager Tom Hellman made a presentation and responded to questions from the city council. City Attorney Stephen Wong clarified the question of the city's liability insurance. The following speakers spoke under this item. One Jerry Burnout two. Jim Snook motion by Councilmember Kozlowski. Second by Councilmember Leary to approve resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-eight. Motion passed by the following roll call vote, eyes, knows, absent, abstain, Kozlowski, Leary, Rathal, Roorbau, Aquino none 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 twenty-three. Resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-five A resolution approving deferral of hiring ten, ten firefighters due to over three million dollar dollars in projected F I twenty-twenty-five slash twenty-twenty-six operational deficit draft not official until approved by City Council page six file zero thirty-four dash twenty-one twenty-five dash zero-zero-one Folsom City Council minutes July eighth, twenty-twenty-five City Manager Brian Witamier made a presentation and responded to questions from the city council. Fire Chief Ken Cusano further responded. The following speakers spoke under this item. One Tyler Smith two. Dan Carson three. Matt McGee four. Matt Blake five. Brian Beck six. Shelley Montell seven. Adam House eight. Michael Lilienthal nine. Trevor Jameson ten. Dale Hemstal eleven. Lee Snorteland twelve. Felipe Rodriguez thirteen. Scott Glines fourteen. Ghul Khan fifteen. Karen Burrell sixteen. Ronald Carter seventeen. Marty Ernest eighteen. Tracy Randall nineteen. Dan Quiggle City Manager Brian Witamier and Fire Chief Ken Cusano further responded to questions from the city council. City Manager Brian Witamier made a modified recommendation to the city council to hire eight firefighters. Councilmembers made further comments. Motion by Councilmember Kozlowski. Second by Councilmember Leary to not approve resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-five. Motion passed by the following roll call vote, eyes, knows, absent, abstain, Kozlowski, Leary, Rathal, Roorbau, Aquino none 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 City Manager reports City Manager Brian Witamier did not have anything to report. Council comments there were no council comments. Adjournment draft not official until approved by City Council page seven file zero thirty-four dash twenty-one twenty-five dash zero-zero-one Folsom City Council minutes July eighth, twenty-twenty-five there being no further business to come before the city council. The meeting was adjourned at ten thirty-six P M attest.
City manager may approve the application subject to the city council ratification as soon as practicable to do so. Requests to the city council or the city manager for approval of a grant application shall identify anticipated long-term maintenance and slash or renovation costs, required city matching funds, and additional personnel that may be needed if the grant is awarded for a capital project. With respect to grants for staffing, the source of funds for long-term staffing after the expiration of the grant shall also be identified in the request for approval of the grant application. All grant applications on behalf of the city shall be reviewed by the finance director before submission to the city council or the grantor. Analysis: The Sacramento area UASI has negotiated an offer from Peregrin to cover the setup and first-year expenses. The Peregrin system is an advanced real-time situational awareness and command platform designed to support law enforcement operations. It integrates data from multiple sources, including dispatch systems and field reports into a single, map-based interface. This integration provides command staff and field personnel with a unified operational picture, significantly enhancing coordination, resource tracking, and incident response. We can also share among agencies, to coordinate both emergency and investigative responses. Adopting Peregrin will advance our agency's capacity to make informed, real-time decisions in both day-to-day policing and major incidents. Key benefits include improved officer safety, optimized deployment, faster response times, and increased transparency. The system also strengthens our ability to share appropriate crime and incident data with the public, aligning with our broader commitment to accountability and modernized policing. The UASI grant specifically funds the initial CAD/ RMS integration at a value of sixty-four thousand dollars. The grant amount increased at the final award to sixty-five thousand dollars. Financial impact: The UASI grant fully covers the startup and first-year cost, sixty-four thousand dollars, of Peregrin for our call and report systems, CAD/ RMS. The award is one thousand dollar higher than the projected cost of the first year of the program. If we decide to continue the use of the program, we can apply that one thousand dollars to the following year. To the Homeland Security Grant Program (HSGP), Urban Area Security Initiative (UASI), awarded funding for the city of Folsom in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars for subscribing to Peregrin's software platform and does not require a financial match. If accepted, the funding award would increase revenue estimates and appropriations by sixty-four thousand dollars in the general fund, Fund Zero Ten. Costs would be funded initially through the general fund, Fund Zero Ten, and reimbursed by the HSGP UASI. Attachments: 1. Resolution Number 11415, A Resolution Accepting a Grant of Sixty-Five Thousand Dollars From the Urban Area Security Initiative (UASI) For the Police Department and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Contract with Peregrin Technologies for Sixty-four Thousand Dollars for a Real-Time Decision and Operations Management Platform and Appropriation of Funds in the General Fund, Fund Zero Ten. 2. Notification of Subrecipient Subaward Approval Letter Submitted: Randy Ula Berry, Interim Chief of Police Three Attachment One Resolution No. 11415 A Resolution Accepting a Grant of Sixty-Five Thousand Dollars From the Urban Area Security Initiative (UASI) For the Police Department and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Contract with Peregrin Technologies for Sixty-four Thousand Dollars for a Real-Time Decision and Operations Management Platform and Appropriation of Funds in the General Fund, Fund Zero Ten. Whereas, the Sacramento Regional Office of Homeland Security Urban Area Security Initiative (UASI) has negotiated an offer from Peregrin Technologies to offer its real-time solution and analytics platform to UASI-area agencies at a substantial discount, and whereas, the UASI has offered a grant to cover the base price of sixty-four thousand dollars for the first year of service, with options to continue the service if funding is available, and whereas, the police department believes that data sharing and analytics provided by this program will enhance service to the community and the apprehension of criminal violators, and whereas, the contract with Peregrin Technologies will be in a format acceptable to the city attorney. Now, therefore, BIT resolved by the City Council of the City of Folsom hereby authorizes the city manager to accept the UASI grant in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars and execute an agreement with Peregrin Technologies for their analytic software for an amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand dollars, and that the chief financial officer is authorized to increase revenue estimates and expenditure appropriations by sixty-four thousand dollars in the general fund, Fund Zero Ten. Passed and adopted this twelfth day of August 2025, by the following roll call: Vote: Eyes, Knows, Absent, Obstain?
For the purchase of chemicals for the water treatment plant submitted, Marcus Yasutaki, Director Environmental and Water Resources Department 3 Resolution No. eleven thousand four hundred and thirty seven A Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with NTU Technologies Inc. For three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars from the Water Operating Fund, Fund five hundred and twenty, for the purchase of chemicals for the water treatment plant whereas, the city identifies that the purchase is critical to ensuring the treatment of high quality water to be delivered to all customers, and whereas, the city of Folsom has identified this purchase as a priority to maintain the integrity and operation of the water treatment system. And whereas, the chemicals have proven to provide high water quality with the city's unique treatment process and variety of incoming water properties, and whereas, NTU Technologies, Inc. chemicals are specific and proprietary with unique chemical blends optimal for the city's treatment process, which requires the city purchase these chemicals through a sole source procurement process, and whereas, sufficient funds have been budgeted and are available in the Water Operating Fund, Fund five hundred and twenty, end. Whereas, the agreement will be in a form acceptable to the city attorney, now, therefore, BIT resolved that the City Council of the City of Folsom authorizes the city manager to execute an agreement with NTU Technologies, Inc. for the purchase of chemicals for the water treatment plant for an amount not to exceed three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. Passed and adopted this twelfth day of August, two thousand twenty five, by the following roll call vote: Eyes, Knows, Absent, Abstain, Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S attest. Mayor Resolution Number eleven thousand four hundred and thirty seven page one of one Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date, August twelfth, two thousand twenty five Agenda Section, Consent Calendar Subject, Resolution Number eleven thousand four hundred and thirty nine A Resolution authorizing they, city manager to execute an agreement with Mars Company for one hundred and ninety eight thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars from the Water Operating Fund, Fund five hundred and twenty, for a software license and maintenance subscription for the meter test bench from, Environmental and Water Resources Department Recommendation slash City Council Action The Environmental and Water Resources Department recommends the City Council pass and adopt Resolution Number eleven thousand four hundred and thirty nine A Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Mars Company for one hundred and ninety eight thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars from the Water Operating Fund, Fund five hundred and twenty, for a software license and maintenance subscription for the meter test bench. Background slash Issue To comply with state law, the city of Folsom was required to install water meters on all residential water services by January two thousand and thirteen and begin billing customers based on consumption by March two thousand and thirteen. To support the successful implementation of this citywide metering program, the city established the Water Meter Division in two thousand and seven. The Water Meter Division is responsible for a wide range of operational activities, including the installation and replacement of meters, meter reading, maintenance, and repair, billing support, customer service, management of the city's fixed network system, and staff training. To support meter accuracy and performance, the city purchased a Mars Company small meter test bench in two thousand and nineteen, which was installed in two thousand twenty at the Zone Four, FPA Pump Station. The test benches used to evaluate a sample set of both new and in-service small meters, five slash eight to two, to ensure they meet American Water Works Association, AWWA, and manufacturer specifications. One accurate metering is essential for reliable billing, water loss control, and regulatory reporting. To maintain the performance and compliance of the test bench, annual software license renewal, calibration, and certification are required. Policy slash Rule In accordance with Chapter two point three six of the Folsom Municipal Code, Supplies, Equipment, Services, and Construction with a value of seventy five thousand and forty nine dollar or greater shall be awarded by City Council. Analysis The Environmental and Water Resources Department has operated a Mars meter test bench since two thousand twenty to support the city's water meter testing and verification program. To ensure continued accuracy and compliance with American Water Works Association, AWWA, and manufacturer standards, the test bench requires annual software licensing, calibration, and certification. As part of a water loss control program evaluation completed in two thousand twenty three, there were several recommendations provided by the consultant related to water meter testing. This included a small customer meter testing program using the Mars meter test bench to complete the following: One informant updated apparent loss assessment for the annual American Water Works Association water audit and provide documentation to submit to the State Water Resources Control Board. Two help identify potential replacement opportunities for poorly performing groups of meters. As an example, the city of Folsom has some active small meters that are older than twenty five years, and testing might help evaluate the business case for replacing these meters. Mars Company offers a five-year service agreement that includes the M three software license, equipment calibration, and certification services. Entering into a multi-year agreement provides a cost-effective alternative to annual renewals, resulting in substantial long-term savings. The proposed agreement includes annual costs of forty one thousand one hundred and ten dollar in year one, thirty seven thousand seven hundred and nine dollar in year two, thirty eight thousand eight hundred and forty one dollar in year three, forty thousand and seven dollar in year four, and forty one thousand two hundred and eight dollar in year five. The total five-year cost is one hundred and ninety eight thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars, representing a savings of one hundred and twenty three thousand eight hundred and nine dollars compared to purchasing these services individually each year. The Environmental and Water Resources Department recommends that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Mars Company for a five-year software license and maintenance subscription for the meter test bench in the amount of one hundred and ninety eight thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars. Financial Impact The software license and maintenance subscription for the meter test bench is for an amount not to exceed forty one thousand one hundred and ten dollars for FI twenty twenty five to twenty six, thirty seven thousand seven hundred and nine dollars for FI twenty twenty six dash twenty seven, thirty eight thousand eight hundred and forty one dollars for FI twenty seven dash twenty eight, forty thousand and seven dollars for FI twenty eight dash twenty nine, and forty one thousand two hundred and eight dollars for FI twenty nine thirty. Funding for this agreement is included in the fiscal year two two thousand twenty five to twenty six operating budget under the Water Operating Fund, Fund five hundred and twenty. It is also planned to be included in the Water Operating Fund, Fund five hundred and twenty, budgets for FI twenty twenty six to twenty seven through FI twenty twenty nine thirty as part of the annual budgeting process. This agreement will cover the five-year service agreement for a total not to exceed amount of one hundred and ninety eight thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars. Environmental Review This action is exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act Section fifteen thousand three hundred and one. Attachment Resolution Number eleven thousand four hundred and thirty nine A Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Mars Company for one hundred and ninety eight thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars from the Water Operating Fund, Fund five hundred and twenty, for a software license and maintenance subscription for the meter test bench submitted, Marcus Yasutaki, Director Environmental and Water Resources Department 3 Resolution No. eleven thousand four hundred and thirty nine A Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Mars Company for one hundred and ninety eight thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars from the Water Operating Fund, Fund five hundred and twenty, for a software license and maintenance subscription for the meter test bench whereas, water meter testing is essential to ensure accurate billing and annual reporting, and whereas, in October two thousand and nineteen, the city executed an agreement with Mars Company to purchase a water meter test bench, and whereas, this Mars test bench requires an annual software license, and equipment calibration and certification, and whereas, sufficient funds are budgeted and available in the FI twenty twenty five to twenty six Water Operating Fund, Fund five hundred and twenty, and are also planned to be included in the Water Operating Fund budgets for fiscal years two thousand twenty six to twenty seven, two thousand twenty seven to twenty eight, two thousand twenty eight to twenty nine, and two thousand twenty nine to thirty as part of the annual budget adoption process, and whereas, the agreement will be in a form acceptable to the city attorney, now, therefore, BIT resolved that the City Council of the City of Folsom authorizes the city manager to execute an agreement with Mars Company for one hundred and ninety eight thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars from the Water Operating Fund, Fund five hundred and twenty, for a software license and maintenance subscription for the meter test bench. Passed and adopted this twelfth day of August two thousand twenty five, by the following roll call vote: Eyes, Knows, Absent, Abstain, Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S attest. City Clerk Resolution Number eleven thousand four hundred and thirty nine page one of one Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date, August twelfth, two thousand twenty five Agenda Section, Consent Calendar Subject, Resolution No. one one four four one A Resolution Receiving Report From The Community Development Department on the Approval of a Parcel Map Waiver for the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Project From Community Development Department Recommendation slash City Council Action Staff recommends that the City Council approve Resolution Number eleven thousand four hundred and forty one to receive a report from the Community Development Department on the approval of a parcel map waiver for a residential condominium project by the Planning Commission pursuant to Folsom Municipal Code Section sixteen point twenty four point zero eighty, E. Background slash Issue When an applicant is proposing to develop condominiums on a single parcel, they may request a parcel map waiver from the Planning Commission. Folsom Municipal Code, FMC, Section sixteen point twenty four point zero eighty, E, requires that, if the Planning Commission approves or conditionally approves a parcel map waiver, the Community Development Department must make a written report to the City Council. The applicant, Leonard Holmes, requested approval of a parcel map waiver, residential condominiums, and design review for the development of a one eighteen unit residential condominium community, referred to as the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Project. The project is located on a twelve dot thirty nine acre site at the southwest corner of the intersection of Empire Ranch Road and Trumpet Vine Drive in the Russell Ranch subdivision portion of the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan, THASP, as shown in Exhibit A below. Approval of an inclusionary housing plan was also requested. One Exhibit A, Project Vicinity All requests were subject to review and approval by the Planning Commission, which considered the project at its July twenty third, two thousand twenty five, meeting. The Planning Commission approved all requests unanimously. However, as noted above and further described in the Policy slash Rule section of this report, the FMC requires the Community Development Department to make a written report to the City Council. Further, the City Council may vote to review the parcel map waiver and conditions. Staff supports the parcel map waiver granted by the Planning Commission, and recommends that the City Council approve the resolution confirming the waiver. Policy slash Rule FMC Section sixteen point twenty four point zero eighty, E, requires that, if a parcel map waiver is approved or conditionally approved, the Community Development Department shall make a written report to the City Council. FMC Section sixteen point twenty four point zero eighty, E, further states, if the City Council, by a majority vote, decides to review the waiver and conditions, it shall conduct a public hearing after giving notice pursuant to Section sixteen point sixteen point zero seventy, A, the City Council may add, modify, or delete conditions if the City Council determines that such changes are necessary to ensure that the two waiver conforms to the Subdivision Map Act and this code. The City Council may deny the waiver on any of the grounds contained in this title. Analysis Staff is providing this written report with a recommendation that the City Council confirm the Planning Commission's approval of the parcel map waiver through approval of Resolution Number eleven thousand four hundred and forty one. In its action, the Planning Commission made all necessary findings for approving the parcel map waiver, including that it is consistent with the City of Folsom two thousand thirty five general plan, the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan, the city's subdivision ordinance, and the Subdivision Map Act. The Planning Commission further found that the site is physically suitable for the type and density of development proposed, and that project would not likely cause substantial environmental damage or serious public health or safety problems. If the council follows staff's recommendation, it will forego review of the parcel map waiver, and the Planning Commission approval will stand consistent with FMC Section sixteen point twenty four point zero eighty, E. Financial Impact No financial impact is anticipated with the approval of the parcel map waiver as the project will not result in any changes to the total number of residential units within the THASP. Environmental Review Staff is requesting that the City Council confirm the Planning Commission's action approving the parcel map waiver. There is no action pending before the City Council to approve the parcel map waiver itself, therefore, the request is not considered a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. Should the council choose not to approve the proposed resolution and request that the parcel map waiver be added to a subsequent hearing calendar for review, further environmental review under CEQA may be required. For context, an addendum to the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan EIR slash EIS and Russell Ranch EIR was prepared and adopted in accordance with state CEQA guidelines for the original Russell Ranch lots twenty four through thirty two subdivision project in two thousand and eighteen, which included development of the project's site. It was found that none of the events described in CEQA Guidelines fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty two which would require preparation of a subsequent EIR, substantial changes to the project, substantial changes in the circumstances under which the project is undertaken, or new information of substantial importance, occurred. Therefore, the Planning Commission found that no further environmental review was required in association with this project in accordance with CEQA Guidelines Section fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty two. Attachments One. Resolution No. one one four four one A Resolution Receiving Report from the Community Development Department on the approval of a parcel map waiver for the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Project Two. Planning Commission Staff Report, dated July twenty third, two thousand twenty five, without attachments, three. Draft Minutes From July twenty third, two thousand twenty five, Planning Commission Meeting Three Four. Preliminary Site Plan for Map Waiver and Condominium Purposes, dated May ninth, two thousand twenty five five. Draft Condominium Plan, dated March twentieth, two thousand twenty five six. Conditions of Approval Submitted, Pam Johns Community Development Director For Attachment One Resolution No. eleven thousand four hundred and forty one A Resolution Receiving Report from the Community Development Department on the approval of a parcel map waiver for the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Project Whereas, the Planning Commission on July twenty third, two thousand twenty five, held a public hearing on a proposed parcel map waiver, design review, and inclusionary housing plan, known as the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Project, considered public comment, and found that no further environmental review is required for the project in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, Guidelines Section fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty two, and whereas, the Planning Commission on July twenty third, two thousand twenty five, held a public hearing on a proposed parcel map waiver, design review, and inclusionary housing plan, known as the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Project, considered public comment, and, based on the proposed project exhibits, determined that the proposed project complies with all city requirements as well as with the requirements of the State Subdivision Map Act and approved the project, and whereas, Folsom Municipal Code Section sixteen point twenty four point zero eighty, E, requires that, if a parcel map waiver is approved or conditionally approved by the Planning Commission, the Community Development Department shall make a written report to the City Council, and further, that the City Council may vote to review the parcel map waiver and conditions, and whereas, the City Council has received a written report from the Community Development Department on the approval of the parcel map waiver by the Planning Commission, with conditions, and whereas, the City Council finds that the Planning Commission made appropriate findings to support approval of the parcel map waiver in their July twenty third, two thousand twenty five, action and that no further review from the City Council is necessary for the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Project. Now, therefore, BIT resolved that the City Council hereby accepts the written report from the Community Development Department and confirms the July twenty third, two thousand twenty five, Planning Commission approval of the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Project. Passed and adopted this twelfth day of August two thousand twenty five, by the following roll call vote: Eyes, Knows, Absent, Abstain, Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S Councilmember, S attest. Mayor Resolution Number eleven thousand four hundred and forty one page one of one Attachment Two APPRVED City of Folsom Planning Comazon by underscore JK underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Agenda Item No. One Type, Public Hearing Date, July twenty third, two thousand twenty five Planning Commission Staff Report Fifty Natoma Street Council Chambers Folsom, California, nine five six three zero Project. One Type, Public Hearing Date, July twenty third, two thousand twenty five Planning Commission Staff Report Fifty Natoma Street Council Chambers Folsom, California, nine five six three zero Project. File Number, Request, Location, Parcel, S Staff Contact, Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five MSTR twenty five dash zero 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 nine four Tentative Parcel Map Waiver, File Number, Request, Location, Parcel, S Staff Contact, Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five MSTR twenty five dash zero 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 nine four Tentative Parcel Map Waiver, Residential Condominiums, Design Review, and Inclusionary Housing Plan Southwest Intersection of Empire Ranch Road and Trumpet Vine Drive zero seven two thirty five ten dash zero zero five dash zero 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 Josh King-Kate, Associate Planner, nine one six, four six one, six two zero nine J King-Kate at folsom.ca.us Property. Residential Condominiums, Design Review, and Inclusionary Housing Plan Southwest Intersection of Empire Ranch Road and Trumpet Vine Drive zero seven two thirty five ten dash zero zero five dash zero 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 Josh King-Kate, Associate Planner, nine one six, four six one, six two zero nine J King-Kate at folsom.ca.us Property. Owner Name, TPGAGEHC three, Len, CA five Limited Partnership Address, ten twenty five, Creekside Ridge Drive Suite two forty, Roseville, California, nine five six seven eight Applicant Name, Leonard Holmes Address, ten twenty five, Creekside Ridge Drive Suite two forty, Roseville, California, nine five six seven eight Recommendation, Owner Name, TPGAGEHC three, Len, CA five Limited Partnership Address, ten twenty five, Creekside Ridge Drive Suite two forty, Roseville, California, nine five six seven eight Applicant Name, Leonard Holmes Address, ten twenty five, Creekside Ridge Drive Suite two forty, Roseville, California, nine five six seven eight Recommendation, conduct a public hearing and upon conclusion confirm staff's determination that no further environmental review of the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Project is required, conduct a public hearing and upon conclusion confirm staff's determination that no further environmental review of the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Project is required, and approve a tentative parcel map waiver, residential condominiums, design review, and and approve a tentative parcel map waiver, residential condominiums, design review, and inclusionary housing plan for the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Project, MSTR twenty five dash zero 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 nine four. inclusionary housing plan for the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Project, MSTR twenty five dash zero 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 nine four. Based on the findings included in this report, findings A O, and subject to the attached conditions of approval, conditions one to fifty nine. Based on the findings included in this report, findings A O, and subject to the attached conditions of approval, conditions one to fifty nine. Project Summary, The proposed project includes development of a one eighteen unit residential condominium project on a twelve dot thirty nine acre site located at the southwest intersection of Empire Ranch Road and Trumpet Vine Drive in the SPM LDPD, Project Summary, The proposed project includes development of a one eighteen unit residential condominium project on a twelve dot thirty nine acre site located at the southwest intersection of Empire Ranch Road and Trumpet Vine Drive in the SPM LDPD, Multifamily Low Density Residential Plan Development District, Land Use Designation of the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan. Multifamily Low Density Residential Plan Development District, Land Use Designation of the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan. The project proposes utilizing the site layout from the previously approved tentative parcel map for Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five, The project proposes utilizing the site layout from the previously approved tentative parcel map for Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five, while changing the ownership type from fee simple lots to condominium ownership. while changing the ownership type from fee simple lots to condominium ownership. A residential design review is also requested for the architecture and design of the project. A residential design review is also requested for the architecture and design of the project. City of Folsom Page one APPRVED City of Folsom Planning Comazon by underscore JK underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Agenda Item No. City of Folsom Page one APPRVED City of Folsom Planning Comazon by underscore JK underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Agenda Item No. One Type, Public Hearing Date, July twenty third, two thousand twenty five Table of Contents, one Background Two. One Type, Public Hearing Date, July twenty third, two thousand twenty five Table of Contents, one Background Two. Description slash Analysis Three. Description slash Analysis Three. Conditions of Approval Four. Conditions of Approval Four. Vicinity Map Five. Vicinity Map Five. Preliminary Site Plan for Map Waiver and Condominium Purposes, dated May ninth, two thousand twenty five six. Preliminary Site Plan for Map Waiver and Condominium Purposes, dated May ninth, two thousand twenty five six. Russell Ranch Village Five Draft Condominium Plan, dated March twentieth, two thousand twenty five seven. Russell Ranch Village Five Draft Condominium Plan, dated March twentieth, two thousand twenty five seven. Setback Exhibit Eight. Setback Exhibit Eight. Russell Ranch Phase Two Village Five Design Review Submital, dated May sixth, two thousand twenty five. Russell Ranch Phase Two Village Five Design Review Submital, dated May sixth, two thousand twenty five. Site Plan, Exterior Elevations, Building Plans, Floor Plans, Color slash Material Board, Alternate Color Scheme, Color Scheme Plotting, nine. Site Plan, Exterior Elevations, Building Plans, Floor Plans, Color slash Material Board, Alternate Color Scheme, Color Scheme Plotting, nine. Landscaping Plans, dated May eighth, two thousand twenty five ten. Landscaping Plans, dated May eighth, two thousand twenty five ten. Russell Ranch Design Guidelines, Architectural Guidelines for Town Homes eleven. Russell Ranch Design Guidelines, Architectural Guidelines for Town Homes eleven. Project Narrative, Design Narrative, and Architectural Design Compliance Letters Twelve. Project Narrative, Design Narrative, and Architectural Design Compliance Letters Twelve. Russell Ranch Phase Two Village Five Inclusionary Housing Compliance Letter, dated May ninth, two thousand twenty five thirteen. Russell Ranch Phase Two Village Five Inclusionary Housing Compliance Letter, dated May ninth, two thousand twenty five thirteen. Draft Codes, Covenants, and Restrictions, CC and ours, fourteen. Draft Codes, Covenants, and Restrictions, CC and ours, fourteen. Previously Approved Village Five Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map Lots twenty four through thirty two Russell Ranch, dated January twenty fourth, two thousand and eighteen fifteen. Previously Approved Village Five Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map Lots twenty four through thirty two Russell Ranch, dated January twenty fourth, two thousand and eighteen fifteen. Final Map, PN seventeen to two hundred and eighty eight, Russell Ranch Phase Two Large Lot, dated October two thousand and eighteen sixteen. Final Map, PN seventeen to two hundred and eighty eight, Russell Ranch Phase Two Large Lot, dated October two thousand and eighteen sixteen. Russell Ranch Development, Lots twenty four through thirty two, Environmental Checklist and Addendum Seventeen. Russell Ranch Development, Lots twenty four through thirty two, Environmental Checklist and Addendum Seventeen. Public Comments Received Submitted, underscore 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 two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Agenda Item No. Pam Johns Community Development Director APPRVED City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in GUSCO M R Main Discussion Phase Two, Village Five, MSTR twenty five dash zero 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 nine four. By underscore JK underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore ULE D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy two slash underscore fifty two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Attachment One Background Background On May fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, the City Council approved a General Plan Amendment, Specific Plan Amendment, Large Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map, Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map. Plan Development Permit, Design Guidelines, Inclusionary Housing Plan, an amended and restated Development Agreement Amendment for development of an eight seventy nine unit single-family residential subdivision known as the Russell Ranch subdivision within the eastern portion of the Folsom Plan Area. The Russell Ranch Design Guidelines were established to act as an implementation tool for residential development within the Russell Ranch subdivision. On June twenty eighth, two thousand and sixteen, the City Council approved an amended large lot vesting tentative subdivision map and an amended small lot vesting tentative subdivision map for development of the Russell Ranch subdivision as an eight fifty two unit single-family residential subdivision. Final Maps for Phases One and Three of the subdivision, located northwest of Grand Prairie Road, were recorded in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand twenty one respectively, and development has occurred in both phases. On March twenty seventh, two thousand and eighteen, the City Council approved a General Plan Amendment, Specific Plan Amendment, Design Guidelines Amendment, Large Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map, Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map, and Development Agreement Amendment for the development of a five-village, three eighty nine unit residential subdivision commonly referred to as Russell Ranch Phase Two, Russell Ranch Lots twenty four to thirty two subdivision. The large lot final subdivision map for this area was recorded in two thousand and eighteen, included in this staff report in Attachment Fifteen. Small lot maps for Phase Two Villages one to four were recorded in two thousand twenty two and residences have since been built in those villages. A small lot tentative subdivision map for Phase Two Village Five, included in this staff report in Attachment Fourteen, was approved for one hundred and eighteen fee simple, multifamily townhome lots by the Planning Commission as part of the Russell Ranch Lots twenty four to thirty two subdivision entitlement but was never recorded. The Design Guidelines Amendment approved by the Planning Commission in two thousand and eighteen provided additional direction in terms of the architecture and design of the proposed townhome portion of the Russell Ranch subdivision and remains applicable today. Improvement Plans for Phase Two Village Five were subsequently approved, and grading, utility and site improvement work is underway. However, when the applicant submitted for design review for this village, they requested that the village consist of one residential condominium parcel with one hundred and eighteen townhome units rather than the previously approved one hundred and eighteen fee simple townhome parcels. While the site and unit layout remain unchanged from what was previously approved, the map type has changed, and development standards for townhomes with condominium ownership differ from that of fee simple townhomes within the M L D Designation of the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan. City of Folsom Page three A P P R O V E D City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in Regusco M or Main Discussion Phase Two, Village Five, M S T R twenty-five dash zero 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 nine four, by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore U L I D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy-two slash underscore fifty-two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Attachment Two Description slash Analysis Policy slash Rule Folsom Municipal Code Section sixteen point twenty-four point zero eighty, A, four, grants the Planning Commission the discretion to waive all O R part of the requirements for a tentative and parcel map for the construction of a condominium project on a single parcel. To support such a decision, the Planning Commission must make a finding that the proposed division of land complies with the requirements of the Subdivision Map Act, the Folsom Municipal Code, the General Plan and the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan as to area, improvement, and design, floodwater drainage control, improved public roads, sanitary disposal facilities, water supply availability, environmental protection, and other applicable requirements. Such a waiver may be conditioned to provide for, among other things, payment by the subdivider of applicable fees and costs. If the Planning Commission approves the waiver, the Community Development Department must report the same to City Council, which may decide to review the waiver and conditions at a public hearing within thirty days. If the council does not review the waiver, it is deemed approved based on the Planning Commission action and subject to any conditions imposed by the commission. If such a waiver is ultimately approved, the city engineer must file with the county recorder a certificate of compliance confirming that the division and resulting parcel comply with the provisions of the Subdivision Map Act and the Folsom Municipal Code, as well as a plat map showing the division of land. Project Description The applicant, Leonard Holmes of California, requests approval of a parcel map waiver, residential condominiums, and design review for the development of a one eighteen unit residential condominium community, referred to as Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five, on a twelve dot thirty-nine acre site located at the southwest intersection of Empire Ranch Road and Trumpet Vine Drive in the southeastern portion of the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan, F B A S P. The project site is designated in the F B A S P, F B A S P Land Use Plan, Figure one, as S P M L D P D, Multifamily Low Density Residential Plan Development District. Requested Entitlements The first entitlement under consideration is a request for approval of a parcel map waiver, waiver, to permit establishment of a condominium project on a single parcel. The applicant requests the waiver to create a residential condominium community of one hundred and eighteen units on the subject parcel. The second entitlement requested is for design review of the proposed condominiums to ensure compliance with existing development standards, review of the project site design, and to evaluate the architectural design of the buildings. The third entitlement requested is approval of an inclusionary housing plan that proposes to meet the inclusionary housing ordinance requirement with the payment of in-lu fees. City of Folsom Page four A P P R O V E D City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in Regusco M or Main Discussion Phase Two, Village Five, M S T R twenty-five dash zero 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 nine four, by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore U L I D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy-two slash underscore fifty-two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five The project does not require any deviations from applicable development standards. Parcel Map Waiver and Condominium Plans The applicant proposes to create a one lot residential condominium map, as permitted under Folsom Municipal Code, F M C, Section one six point two four point zero eight zero, waiver of parcel map requirements, for condominium project on single parcel. The proposed preliminary site plan is provided in Attachment five. As shown on this exhibit, the map would consist of one lot, Lot Five, with one hundred and eighteen condominium dwelling units. F M C Section sixteen point twenty-four point zero eighty, A, four, permits the Planning Commission to waive all O R part of the requirements for a tentative and parcel map for construction of a condominium project on a single parcel, which is the applicant's request. A waiver by the Planning Commission may be conditioned to provide for, among other things, payment by the subdivider of parkland dedication, drainage, and other fees that are permitted by law. Planning staff have confirmed with Parks and Recreation Department staff that the parkland dedication requirement for the subject site was satisfied by the Russell Ranch Village Two, project with land dedicated for neighborhood Park Six in the Folsom Plan area. Conditions have been included for this project that require payment of any other applicable fees. Each residential unit within the proposed condominium project would be individually owned in fee title, with the areas below, surrounding, and above each unit owned by a common interest development entity of which each owner has a fractional interest. The applicant has provided a draft condominium plan showing how ownership and easements would be reflected, which is included in Attachment six. They also provided a draft set of covenants, conditions, and restrictions, C C and R S, that, once finalized and approved by the California Department of Real Estate, will govern use, maintenance, assessments, and other operational aspects of the condominium community. The draft C C and R S are included as Attachment thirteen to this report. Grading, utility, and roadway improvement plans were previously approved as part of the larger Russell Ranch Phase Two project and have since then been permitted with work already underway on the project site. Design Review The project proposes the construction of one hundred and eighteen attached, for sale dwelling units within twenty-five three-story three-plex, four-plex, and five-plex buildings. Each unit contains a two-car garage on the lower level and living space on all three levels. Units are proposed to contain four bedrooms and between three and a half and four bathrooms. The buildings are situated around a central private park site with a play area, shade sales, a garden, bench seating, a shade structure, picnic tables, grills, sports tables, and outdoor exercise areas. Garages will provide two hundred and thirty-six parking spaces, and uncovered off-street parking will account for an additional one hundred and eleven spaces, over half of which surround the park City of Folsom Page five A P P R O V E D City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in Regusco M or Main Discussion Phase Two, Village Five, M S T R twenty-five dash zero 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 nine four, by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore U L I D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy-two slash underscore fifty-two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five The project's site contains one gated access point from Trumpet Vine Drive to the north and a secondary emergency vehicle access road via Elm Trail Court two, the southwest. The units themselves will be accessed in the front via pedestrian pathways and in the rear via internal motor i courts. The building, private park, parking, access points, and internal roadway locations were previously approved by the Planning Commission with the prior tentative parcel map for Russell Ranch Phase Two. The applicant is proposing to utilize the same site layout and unit count as what was previously approved but change the building ownership type from fee simple lots to condominium units. This requires a request for a parcel map waiver, as discussed in more depth later in this report. The applicant has also provided proposed plans for landscaping, parking lot shading, building elevations, and floor plans for the design review. Inclusionary Housing Plan as permitted by the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, the applicant is proposing to meet their inclusionary housing requirement by providing an in-lu fee payment, Attachment twelve. The in-lu fee payment is calculated by multiplying one percent of the lowest-priced for-sale residential unit within the proposed condominium project by the total number of for-sale residential units within the proposed project. The in-lu fee is payable at the time of the building permit on a per-unit basis. Analysis General Plan and Specific Plan Consistency The nine point five acre project site has a general plan land use designation of M L D, multifamily low density, and a specific plan designation of S P M L D P D, Specific Plan Multifamily Low Density Plan Development District. The project is consistent with both the general plan and the specific plan land use designations, as multifamily townhome units are identified as a permitted land use within the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan, F B A S P, Table eight point one. The proposed project, which will be developed with nine point five dwelling units per acre, is also consistent with the allowable density range, seven to twelve dwelling units per acre, established by the general plan, Table L U one, residential designations, and the F B A S P. The proposed project meets the development requirements established in the F B A S P, Table eight point four, for lot area, building height, building setbacks, and parking, as described below. Parcel Map Waiver as discussed in the Project Description section of this report, the applicant is requesting approval of a parcel map waiver, pursuant to F M C Section one six point two four point zero eight zero and supported by a draft condominium plan. This would allow the development of the project as a residential condominium project, once the waiver is processed by the city engineer and recorded. Pursuant to F M C Section sixteen point twenty-four point zero eighty, B, the Planning Commission must find City of Folsom Page six A P P R O V E D City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in Regusco M or Main Discussion Phase Two, Village Five, M S T R twenty-five dash zero 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 nine four, by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore U L I D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy-two slash underscore fifty-two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five that the proposed division of land, a term used generally by that section for all types of tentative and final map waivers, complies with requirements as to area, improvement, and design, floodwater drainage control, appropriate, improved public roads, sanitary disposal facilities, water supply availability, environmental protection, and other requirements of the Subdivision Map Act, Title sixteen of the F M C, the F M C in general, the general plan and any applicable specific plan. As discussed in this report, the project's site meets all requirements listed above, as conditioned. As such, staff believe that the Planning Commission can find the proposed project compliant with the general plan and F B A S P. In addition, the applicant has provided a draft condominium plan and draft C C and R S, Attachments six and thirteen, that govern the property ownership, operation, and maintenance on the site, ensuring that the project will not result in negative impacts to surrounding properties. The city engineer's filing of the certificate of compliance for the one lot residential condominium map with the county recorder will render the previous Village Five Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map for one hundred and eighteen fee simple lots null and void. Condition number twenty-seven has been added to reflect this. Staff found that the two parcels located directly south of the project's site, lots thirteen and fourteen, on the Russell Ranch Phase Two Large Lot Map, were required to be deeded to the city in fee title for the future White Rock Road J P A Connector slash Empire Ranch Road interchange subject to compensation provided by the J P A Connector. While the requirement for this dedication has not been triggered yet, there are existing city drainage facilities and future pedestrian trails located within these parcels. As such, staff has provided condition number twenty-six, which states that an easement shall be dedicated to the city for drainage and pedestrian trail access and maintenance on lots thirteen and fourteen prior to filing of the certificate of compliance. This allows for the city facilities to continue as planned while allowing the actual dedication of that land to occur at a later time when the interchange moves forward. F M C Section sixteen point twenty-four point zero eighty, E, requires that, if the waiver is approved or conditionally approved, the Community Development Department make a written report to the City Council. Section sixteen point twenty-four point zero eighty, E, further states, if the City Council, by a majority vote, decides to review the waiver and conditions, it shall conduct a public hearing after giving notice pursuant to Section one six point one six point zero seven zero A. In addition, notice shall be given to the Planning Commission. The public hearing shall be held within thirty days after the date of the request for review. The City Council may add, modify, or delete conditions if the City Council determines that such changes are necessary to ensure that the waiver conforms to the Subdivision Map Act and this code. The City Council may deny the waiver on any of the grounds contained in this title. Within ten days following the conclusion of the hearing, the City Council shall render its decision. If the City Council does not act within the time limits set forth in this section, the waiver shall be deemed to City of Folsom Page seven A P P R O V E D City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in Regusco M or Main Discussion Phase Two, Village Five, M S T R twenty-five dash zero 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 nine four, by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore U L I D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy-two slash underscore fifty-two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five have been approved or conditionally approved as last approved or conditionally approved by the Planning Commission insofar as it complies with all other applicable provisions of the subdivision. Map Act, this title, this code, the general plan and any applicable specific plan. Should the Planning Commission conditionally approve the waiver, staff will follow the requirements of Section sixteen point twenty-four point zero eighty, E, for reporting to City Council and any further review. Design Review The purpose of the design review process is to ensure compliance with the established development standards for multifamily low-density development, review the project's site design, and evaluate the architectural design of the residential buildings. Development Standards S P M L D P D Designation The project is subject to the development standards established in the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan for Multifamily Low Density Residential, S P M L D P D, Parcels for Townhomes Under Condominium Ownership. Staff notes that while the Russell Ranch Plan Development Design Guidelines contain development standards for townhomes, these standards assumed that the townhomes were on fee simple lots rather than condominium lots, as stated in the P N seventeen dash two eighty-eight Russell Ranch Lots twenty-four through thirty-two subdivision staff report. Since townhome lots with condominium ownership are not addressed in the Russell Ranch Design Guidelines, staff used the existing condominium ownership townhome development standards from the F B A S P. Staff found that a planned development modification or update to the Russell Ranch Design Guidelines would not be required for this change since townhomes with condominium ownership are allowed by right in the S P M L D Specific Plan District and the applicant is using the existing standards from the F B A S P for this type of housing product. The primary difference in development standards is that the condominium standards allow for greater building height, four floors, up to fifty feet versus two floors up to thirty-five feet. The table below outlines the development standards for the S P M L D Specific Plan District for townhomes with condominium ownership and how the proposed project complies with those standards. City of Folsom Page A A P P R O V E D City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in Regusco M or Main Discussion Phase Two, Village Five, M S T R twenty-five dash zero 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 nine four, by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore U L I D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy-two slash underscore fifty-two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Table one. Development Standards Table S P M L Townhomes, Garden Apartments, Apartments, Rental or Condominium Ownership. Proposed Project Lot Area One point zero acre Minimum Development Standards Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Lot with Front Yard Setback Rear Yard Setback N A thirty feet M I N to ten feet M I N to back of back of sidewalk for sidewalk Primary Structures, Porches, and Courtyards Twelve point three nine acres N A thirty three point eight feet M I N, to back of sidewalk Twenty one point nine feet M I N to back of sidewalk Sideyard Setbacks Ten feet M I N, interior side yard, twenty feet M I N to back of sidewalk, street side yard corner lot, sixteen point seven feet M I N, interior side yards. Building Height Four floors and fifty feet max Three floors, thirty-eight feet maximum as shown on the Development Standards Table. The proposed project meets or exceeds all development standards established for the S P M L D P D Designation within the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan for Townhomes with Condominium Ownership. Building Architecture and Design The project is subject to the Architectural Guidelines from the Russell Ranch Plan Development Design Guidelines, Design Guidelines, which were adopted to establish parameters that apply to all single and multifamily land use categories within Russell Ranch. Specific to the townhomes, the Design Guidelines call for the following architectural features: An architectural style selected from the permitted architectural styles for Russell Ranch: California Wine Country, Monterey, Spanish Eclectic, California Cottage, Transitional Bungalow, California Prairie, Spanish Colonial Revival, California Craftsman, California Villa. The provision of vertical articulation at the front elevation to avoid dominant unbroken planes and create shadow lines. Varied setbacks for different portions of the home, such as garages, second floors, balconies, etc., are encouraged. Massing of forms must be established using the fundamental characteristics of the selected architectural style. Contemporary interpretations of the architectural styles permitted for the townhomes are encouraged through the use of eclectic materials, such as metals City of Folsom, page nine A P P R O V E D, City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in GUSXO M or Main Scussion Phase Two, Village Five, M S T R twenty five dash zero 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 nine four, by underscore J K underscore N underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore U L I D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy two slash underscore fifty two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five must be anti-reflective, and variations on traditional siding, asymmetrical roof pitches, and playful massing and use of color. The applicant proposes to utilize the California Prairie architectural style on the buildings, as defined in the Design Guidelines. The applicant states that principles from the Design Guidelines have been incorporated into the building designs including: rectangular, straight-line geometry and linear arrangements, private-covered decks, low-pitched, concrete shingle-hipped roofs with white overhangs, stucco and masonry exteriors, rectangular windows with trim, warm, earthy primary exterior colors with contrasting trim and accent colors, ornamental railings, style-specific lighting, and metal awnings. The Design Narrative and Architectural Compliance Letter provided by the applicant, included within Attachment eleven, provides detailed descriptions of each design theme. The Design Review Submital Package, Attachment eight, provides the full architectural plans for the project, including elevations, floor plans, colors and materials. Staff reviewed the project's site and building design against the Design Guidelines and found that the project features a high-quality design consistent with that document and includes many elements of the California Prairie style. While each site elevation will feature the same architecture, the use of varied color schemes and mirrored facades will help establish a level of variety while maintaining a cohesive community style. As a result, staff recommends approval of the design with the following conditions, included in Condition number forty seven A. The approval is for three three-story building plans, three unit types with four color and material options providing twelve individual expressions. The applicant shall submit building plans that comply with this approval and the Russell Ranch Phase Two Village Five Design Review Submittal dated May sixth, twenty twenty five, included in Attachment eight. B The design, materials, and colors of the proposed project shall be consistent with the building elevations, color renderings, material samples, and color scheme to the satisfaction of the Community Development Department. C The Community Development Department shall approve the individual building permits to assure no duplication or repetition of the same color scheme side by side or across the street from each other. D All mechanical equipment shall be ground-mounted and be shielded by City of Folsom, page ten A P P R O V E D, City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in GUSXO M or Main Scussion Phase Two, Village Five, M S T R twenty five dash zero 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 nine four, by underscore J K underscore N underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore U L I D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy two slash underscore fifty two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Landscaping or Trellis-type Features. Equipment shall be properly ventilated and accessible for maintenance. E Utility Equipment such as transformers, electric, and gas meters, electrical panels, and junction boxes shall be screened by walls and/or landscaping. Signage The proposed project does not include a freestanding monument sign at the project entrance. Staff recommends that the final location, height, size, and design of any future monument sign be subject to review and approval by the Community Development Department to ensure consistency with the requirements of the Folsom Municipal Code, FMC, Section one seven point five nine point zero four zero D. Staff has provided Condition number fifty, which requires that the owner slash applicant obtain a sign permit prior to installing the monument sign. Walls and fencing based on the proximity of the project's site to Empire Ranch Road and White Rock Road, an acoustical analysis was prepared for the original Russell Ranch entitlement, and mitigation measures regarding noise were again reviewed when the lots twenty four through thirty two subdivision map, Phase two, were approved. This study determined that a six-foot solid barrier along the project's site boundary for Village Five facing White Rock Road and a seven-foot solid barrier along the project boundary facing Empire Ranch Road were necessary. Staff has provided Condition number thirty five, which states that the final design of the walls is subject to Community Development Department approval to ensure consistency with the Russell Ranch Specific Plan Design Guidelines. Condition number thirty five also states that decorative pilasters need to be placed at all corners and shall also be placed approximately every fifty feet on center to break up long expanses of the walls along the property boundaries. Site Lighting The lighting plan for pole-mounted streetlights was previously approved as part of the civil improvements for the original project. As shown on the project elevations, Attachment eight, the applicant also proposes to utilize building-attached lighting. All lighting is designed to minimize light and glare impacts to the adjacent properties by shielding and directing light downward. Staff recommends that the final exterior building and site lighting plans be submitted for review and approval by the Community Development Department for location, height, aesthetics, illumination level, glare, and trespass before building permit issuance. In addition, staff recommend all lighting be designed to be shielded and directed downward onto the project's site and away from adjacent properties and public rights of way. Condition number thirty seven is included to reflect these requirements. Waste Enclosures The approved civil improvement plans for the original project include two waste enclosures to serve the project's site. The applicant provided the waste enclosure locations and specifications to City Solid Waste and Recycling, Solid Waste, for review. The plan demonstrated that the enclosures would be accessible to standard trash collection vehicles. Staff have provided Condition number forty nine, which states that the final location and City of Folsom, page eleven A P P R O V E D, City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in GUSXO M or Main Scussion Phase Two, Village Five, M S T R twenty five dash zero 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 nine four, by underscore J K underscore N underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore U L I D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy two slash underscore fifty two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five specifications of the enclosures shall be subject to review and approval by the City of Folsom Solid Waste Division. Per Condition number forty eight, the final design, materials, and colors of the waste enclosures are subject to review and approval by the Community Development Department and are required to be painted to match a primary building color of the residential units. Landscaping The proposed project will install landscaping bordering and interior to the project's site. As shown on the preliminary landscape plan, Attachment nine, proposed landscaping will feature Californianative and low-water-use trees, shrubs, and ground-cover selections intended to comply with the requirements of the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, M W I L O. Proposed Landscape Improvements Include Various Drought-Tolerant Trees, Shrubs, and Ground Cover. City staff worked with the applicant to place accent trees near the utility doors of each building facing interior streets to shield the view of those doors from public view. The preliminary landscape plan meets the city's shade requirement, fifty percent, by providing fifty-one percent shade in the parking lot area within fifteen, fifteen, years. Staff recommend that the final landscape plans be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department. Condition number fifty one is included to reflect this requirement. Inclusionary Housing Plan As permitted by the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, the applicant is proposing to meet their inclusionary housing requirement by providing an in-lu fee payment, Attachment twelve. Staff supports payment of an in-lu fee as the city has been successful in leveraging the Inclusionary Housing Fund to obtain gap financing to support multifamily residential deed-restricted housing projects. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the final inclusionary housing plan and that subsequently the agreement be approved by the city council in a form acceptable to the city attorney and executed prior to recordation of Certificate of Compliance for the Condominium Map Waiver. Condition number twenty four is included to reflect these requirements. Public Comments Received Staff mailed notices for this project to property owners within a three-hundred-foot radius of the project's site and posted a notice in the Folsom Telegraph. At the time of this staff report, four public comments from nearby residents have been received, and are provided in Attachment seventeen. The letters expressed concern regarding construction impacts, safety, privacy, property values, increased traffic, and general lack of green space in multifamily developments. Staff notes that the applicant is required to comply with all conditions of approval and mitigation measures associated with the development of Russell Ranch Phase Two, which address construction noise and traffic impacts. The project's site is within the M L D Specific Plan Designation, which allows for townhomes under condominium ownership up to four floors and fifty feet in height by right. Furthermore, the project does not propose any additional units beyond the one hundred and eighteen units previously analyzed and approved City of Folsom, page twelve A P P R O V E D, City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in GUSXO M or Main Scussion Phase Two, Village Five, M S T R twenty five dash zero 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 nine four, by underscore J K underscore N underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore U L I D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy two slash underscore fifty two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five as a part of the Russell Ranch Phase Two project. Regarding Privacy Concerns, staff notes that the nearest residential property site is approximately fifty feet from the nearest proposed multifamily residence with much of that area landscaped with trees. Finally, regarding green space, the project proposes landscaped areas both around the residences and interior to the site with the central private park site. Environmental Review An Addendum to the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report slash Environmental Impact Statement, E I R slash E I S, and Russell Ranch E I R was prepared and adopted in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act, C E Q A, Guidelines for the Original Russell Ranch Lots twenty four through thirty two subdivision, Phase two, project in two thousand and eighteen. This document, a link to which has been provided in Attachment sixteen, considered development of one hundred and eighteen townhome units on individual lots on the project's site. Under C E Q A Guidelines Section one five one six two, A, when an E I R or negative declaration has been adopted for a project, subsequent environmental review is only required if the lead agency determines that any of the following occur that require major modifications to the previous environmental document: One, substantial project changes; Two, changes with respect to the circumstances under which the project is undertaken; Or, three, new information of substantial importance, which was not known and could not have been known at the time the previous environmental document was certified or adopted. C E Q A Guidelines Section one five one six two, B, states that if none of these circumstances occur, the lead agency shall determine whether to prepare a subsequent negative declaration, addendum, or no further action. The proposed project will not exceed the development area of the Russell Ranch Lots twenty four through thirty two subdivision project. It is also proposed to include the same number of multifamily residential units, one hundred and eighteen. The only physical project change is the increase in building height from a maximum of thirty-five feet to thirty-eight feet. Staff have confirmed that none of the events described in C E Q A Guidelines one five one six two, A, which would require preparation of a subsequent E I R, substantial changes to the project, substantial changes in the circumstances under which the project is undertaken, or new information of substantial importance, have occurred. This project does not introduce any new environmental concerns beyond those already evaluated and will be subject to all applicable mitigation measures identified in the documents in Attachment sixteen and, as applicable, the Russell Ranch E I R and THPASP E I R slash E I S. Therefore, no further environmental review is required in association with this project in accordance with C E Q A Guidelines Section fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty-two. Recommended Planning Commission Action Move to Confirm Staff's Determination That No Further Environmental Review of the Russell Ranch Phase Two Village Five Project Is Required And to Approve a Tentative Parcel Map Waiver Residential Condominiums, Design Review, and Inclusionary Housing Plan for the Russell Ranch Phase Two Village Five Project, M S T R twenty five dash zero 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 nine four, Based on the findings included in this report, findings A O, and subject to the attached conditions of approval, Conditions one to fifty-nine. City of Folsom, page thirteen A P P R O V E D, City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in GUSXO M or Main Scussion Phase Two, Village Five, M S T R twenty five dash zero 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 nine four, by underscore J K underscore N underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore U L I D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy two slash underscore fifty two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five General Findings A Notice of Hearing has been given at the time and in the manner required by state law and city code. B The project is consistent with the general plan, the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan, the Russell Ranch Design Guidelines, and all applicable provisions of the Folsom Municipal Code. C E Q A Findings C The city, as lead agency, previously certified an addendum to the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan E I R slash E I S and Russell Ranch E I R for the Russell Ranch Lots twenty four through thirty two subdivision project. D The city has determined that the Russell Ranch Phase Two Village Five project is consistent with the development reviewed under the addendum to the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan E I R slash E I S and Russell Ranch E I R for the Russell Ranch Lots twenty four through thirty two subdivision project. E The city has determined that the impacts of the Russell Ranch Phase Two Village Five project are adequately addressed by the addendum to the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan E I R slash E I S and Russell Ranch E I R for the Russell Ranch Lots twenty four through thirty two subdivision project and associated mitigation measures. F The city has determined that none of the events specified in Section twenty one thousand one hundred and sixty-six of the Public Resources Code or Section one five one six two, A, of the C E Q A Guidelines have occurred. G The city has determined that this project requires no further environmental review in accordance with Section fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty-two of the C E Q A Guidelines. Parcel Map Waiver Residential Condominium Findings H The proposed project, Parcel Map Waiver for residential condominiums on a single parcel, complies with requirements as to area, improvement, and design, floodwater drainage control, appropriate improved public roads, sanitary disposal facilities, water supply availability, environmental protection, and other applicable requirements of the City of Folsom, page fourteen A P P R O V E D, City of Folsom Planning Commission Plan in GUSXO M or Main Scussion Phase Two, Village Five, M S T R twenty five dash zero 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 nine four, by underscore J K underscore N underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore J underscore U L I D two A three T dot E two underscore zero zero underscore seventy two slash underscore fifty two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Subdivision Map Act, the Folsom Municipal Code, the general plan, and the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan. I The project is designed to be and is subject to conditions of approval that will ensure that the project is developed in compliance with city standards. Design Review Findings J The project is in compliance with the general plan, the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan, and the applicable zoning ordinances. K The project is in conformance with the Russell Ranch Design Guidelines. L The building materials, textures, and colors of the project will be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the general design theme of the neighborhood. Inclusionary Housing Plan M The inclusionary housing plan meets the requirements and intent of Chapter seventeen point one zero four Inclusionary Housing. N The project is subject to a condition of approval requiring an inclusionary housing agreement that complies with all of the requirements of Folsom Municipal Code Chapter seventeen point one zero four. O The proposal to comply with the project's inclusionary housing requirements through payment of in-lu fees will further the goal of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance codified in Chapter seventeen point one zero four and will provide no less units or opportunity for creation of units than if the units had been included within the proposed development project. City of Folsom, page fifteen Attachment three Planning Commission Minutes Special Meeting July twenty third City of Folsom page fifteen Attachment three Planning Commission Minutes Special Meeting July twenty third, twenty twenty five City Council Chambers six thirty P M fifty, Natoma Street, Folsom, California, nine five six three zero. Call to order Planning Commission The regular Planning Commission meeting was called to order at six thirty P M with Chair Eileen Reynolds presiding. Chair Reynolds announced that Commissioner Tanya Morales had submitted her resignation and that recruitment to fill the balance of her term is underway. Pledge of Allegiance: The pledge of allegiance was recited. Roll call Commissioners present, Commissioners absent, Matthew Herrera, Commissioner Daniel West, Vice Chair Diana Laney, Commissioner William Barcelona, Commissioner Justin Hurst, Commissioner Eileen Reynolds, Chair None Citizen Communication, None Minutes Commissioner Barcelona moved to approve the minutes of the June eighteenth, twenty twenty five, meeting as submitted. Commissioner West seconded the motion. Eyes, nose, recused, absent, Herrera, West, Laney, Barcelona, Hurst, Reynolds None 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 Motion passed Planning Commission Minutes July twenty third, twenty twenty five Page one of four New Business One. M S T R twenty five dash zero 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 nine four. Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five Tentative Parcel Map Waiver, Residential Condominiums, Design Review, and Inclusionary Housing Plan, and determination that no further environmental review is required A Public Hearing to consider a tentative parcel map waiver, residential condominiums, design review, and inclusionary housing plan for a one eighteen unit residential condominium project on a twelve dot thirty nine acre site located at the southwest intersection of Empire Ranch Road and Trumpet Vine Drive. The project's site is within the S P M L D P D, Multifamily Low Density Residential, Plan Development District, Land Use Designation of the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan and has a general plan designation of M L D, Multifamily Low Density Residential. An addendum to the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan E I R slash E I S and Russell Ranch E I R was prepared and adopted in accordance with State California Environmental Quality Act, C E Q A, Guidelines for the Original Russell Ranch Lots twenty four through thirty two subdivision, Phase Two, project in two thousand and eighteen. Staff determined that no further environmental review of the proposed project is required under C E Q A Guidelines Section fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty two subsequent E I Rs and negative declarations. Project Planner, Josh Kingcade slash applicant, Leonard Holmes. Commissioner Hurst moved to confirm staff's determination that no further environmental review of the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five project is required, and to approve a tentative parcel map waiver, residential condominiums, design review, and inclusionary housing plan for the Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five project, M S T R two five zero 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 nine four. Based on the findings included in this report, findings A O, and subject to the attached conditions of approval, conditions one to fifty nine, with the following conditions and conditions key modified to reflect recording of a certificate of compliance and modified sound wall design, amendment of condition no. Nineteen Digital Copy of map The owner slash applicant shall provide a digital copy of the recorded certificate of compliance parcel map, in AutoCAD format, to the Community Development Department. Timing, M Be responsible department, C D, E, Amendment of condition no. Twenty Provide F G U S T map The owner slash applicant shall provide the Folsom Court of a Unified School District with a copy of the recorded certificate of compliance parcel map. Timing, M Be responsible department, C D, P, Amendment of condition no. Twenty one Street names The applicant shall use street names as shown in the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan, and in the case of unnamed streets, select street names from the city's approved list or subsequently approved by the Planning Commission for the recorded certificate of compliance parcel map. Timing, M Responsible Department, C D, P, E, Planning Commission Minutes July twenty third, twenty twenty five Page two of four Amendment of condition no. Twenty two Private easement dedication The owner slash applicant shall dedicate private easements for utilities, drainage, water, and sanitary sewer on the parcel map as exhibits attached to the certificate of compliance prior to issuance of a building permit. Timing, B Responsible Department, C D, E, Amendment of condition no. Thirty five Design guidelines Compliance walls and fencing The final location, design, height, materials, and colors of the sound walls and fencing shall be subject to review and approval by the Community Development Department to ensure consistency with the Russell Ranch Specific Plan Design Guidelines. In addition, decorative pilasters are to be placed at all corners and shall also be placed approximately at a distance approved by the city engineer, no closer than every fifty three hundred, feet on center, to break up long expanses of the walls along the property boundaries. Timing, G, I, Be responsible department, C D, P, E, F D Amendment of condition no. Thirty eight Utility agency coordination The owner slash applicant shall coordinate the planning, development, and completion of this project with the various utility agencies, i.e., S M U D, P G, N E, et cetera. The owner slash applicant shall provide the city with written confirmation of public utility service prior to recordation of the certificate of compliance approval of the parcel map. Timing, I M Responsible Department, C D, P, E, Responsible Department C D Community Development Department, P, Planning Division, E, Engineering Division, B, Building Division, A, City Arborist slash Urban Forester P W Public Works Department P R Park and Recreation Department P D Police Department F D Fire Department when required I prior to approval of improvement plans M prior to approval of final map recordation of certificate of compliance B prior to issuance of first building permit O prior to approval of occupancy permit G prior to issuance of grading permit D C during construction O G ongoing requirement Eyes, nose, recused, absent, Herrera, West, Laney, Barcelona, Hurst, Reynolds None 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 Motion passed Planning Commission Minutes July twenty third, twenty twenty five Page three of four Principal Planners Report Principal Planner, Jessica Brant, shared the following with the commission: The next meeting is scheduled for August twentieth, with multiple items on the agenda, O Tattoo Parlour conditional use. Permit O Vet Clinic Conditional Use Permit Modification O Single Family Subdivision Map in the Folsom Plan Area O Review of the Broadstone Crossing Two Development Agreement as related to the pedestrian overcrossing This item needs to return to the Planning Commission before it can be recommended to City Council O No anticipated commissioner absences for August twentieth In the last month, staff approved seven design reviews, including, O Two Custom Homes O Five Residential additions and modifications. Adjournment There being no further business to come before the Folsom Planning Commission, Chair Eileen Reynolds adjourned the meeting at six fifty four P M respectfully submitted, Stephanie Hanam, Administrative Assistant approved, Eileen Reynolds. Chair Planning Commission Minutes July twenty third, twenty twenty five Page four of four Attachment four City of Folsom.
condominium units, unit lines are for condominium unit reference only. They are not lot lines. Service providers school district, parks and recreation, sanitary sewer, domestic water, storm drain, electricity, telephone, cable, Folsom Court of Unified School District City of Folsom City of Folsom City of Folsom City of Folsom smud at N T Comcast scale, horizon. One equals vert. One equals land use summary lot slash village number, village five G P designation, M L D S P slash zoning designation, S P M L D P D land use, multi-family low-density residential slash townhomes condominium ownership acres. Gross twelve point four acres dwelling units, one hundred and eighteen density, nine point five one, gross. Benchmark one hundred N slash A computed designed drawn P R O J E N G R staff taught taught S M P one hundred and eighteen, one hundred and seventeen, one hundred and sixteen, one hundred and thirteen, one hundred and fourteen, one fifteen. H E D G E G road drive one hundred and twelve, one hundred and eleven, one hundred and three, one hundred and four, one hundred and five, one hundred and ten, one hundred and nine, one hundred and eight. Project boundary one hundred and six, one hundred and seven, one hundred and two, one hundred and one, one hundred sixty-nine, sixty-six, fifty-one, ninety-nine, ninety-eight. Rose Trellis Lane Lot five, four hundred and seven B M one Wild Rose L A N E. Rose Trellis Lane forty-nine, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty, fifty-six, fifty-nine, P three A R P one A P two A P three A sixty, fifty-five, sixty-seven, ninety, eighty-nine, eighty-eight, ninety-seven, ninety-two, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-four, ninety-three, sixty-eight, eighty-seven, ninety-one, eighty-six, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five. Project boundary seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, seventy-seven, seventy-six, seventy-five, seventy-four, seventy-three, seventy, sixty-five, fifty-two, fifty-four, sixty-one, sixty-four, seventy-one, fifty-three, sixty-two, sixty-three, seventy-two, pew seventeen point five, pew and E V A E six, eighteen walk parking two percent, two percent, forty-four point three, three twenty-five point six, seven drive aisle two percent, pew and E V A E five, three walk C and G two percent seventeen point five, two four plus or minus pew five, six point five plus or minus pad six P C C slash six sub slash ninety-five percent C N S. No walk adjacent to park, vertical curb per D T L seventeen, S H T C zero four A rough grade three A C slash seven point five sub slash ninety-five percent C N S type two C and G per D T L one, this S H T grade swale. To drain six P C C slash six sub slash ninety-five percent C N S, no walk adjacent to park, A section, drive aisle, W slash parking, N T S pew pew thirty point five pew and E V A E twenty-six point three, three pew and E V A E seventeen point five, twenty-five point six, seven, five, five drive aisle three walk two, four plus or minus six point five plus or minus pad C and G two percent, two percent vertical curb per D T L seventeen. S H T C zero four A rough grade three A C slash seven point five ab slash ninety-five percent C N S type two C and G per D T L one, this S H T grade swale to drain six P C C slash six sub slash ninety-five percent C N S. No walk adjacent to park, eight point one section, drive aisle, no parking, adjacent to Central Park N T S pew seventeen point five pew and E V A E twenty-five walk two percent twenty-six point three, three. Twenty-five point six, seven drive aisle two percent pew and E V A E five, three walk C and G two percent seventeen point five, two four plus or minus pew five, six point five plus or minus pad grade swale to drain six P C C slash six sub slash ninety-five percent C N S. No walk adjacent to park, vertical curb per D T L seventeen, S H T C zero four A three A C slash seven point five ab slash rough ninety-five percent C N S grade type two C and G per D T L one, this S H T grade swale to drain six P C C slash six sub slash ninety-five percent C N S. No walk adjacent to park, B section, drive aisle, walk both sides, N T S pew and E V A E five ten point five two percent min ten percent max two percent driveway W slash house construction rough grade six P C C. Four comma zero 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 si min, slash six sub slash ninety-five percent. C N S pew and E V A E twenty-four, five ten point five, three two percent min V G two percent ten percent max thirty-six valley gutter per D T L sixteen. S H T C zero four A driveway W slash house construction C section, twenty-four alley, typical, exist two I N one G two eight max retaining wall per S H Ts R W one and R W two two type two C and G per three D T L one. This S H T C and G twenty, access road three A C slash seven point five ab slash ninety-five percent C N S rough grade two two exist two I N one G ab shoulder N T S D section. Emergency vehicle access road N T S pew seventeen point five pew and E V A E six, eighteen walk parking two percent, two percent twenty-five drive aisle two percent pew and E V A E seventeen point five, eighteen, six, fifty-six parking walk V G. Two percent, two percent pew and E V A E six P C C slash six sub slash ninety-five percent C N S, no walk adjacent to park, vertical curb per D T L seventeen, S H T C zero four A fifty-six valley gutter per D T L eighteen. S H T C zero four A E section, drive aisle, parking both sides, vertical curb per D T L seventeen, S H T C zero four A six P C C slash six sub slash ninety-five percent C N S. No walk adjacent to park, N T S pew and E V A E five twenty-four, two percent min ten percent max two percent pew and E V A E eighteen, three V G two percent six walk two percent seven point five minutes, three rough grade six P C C. Four comma zero 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 si min, slash six sub slash ninety-five percent C N S thirty-six valley gutter per D T L sixteen. S H T C zero four A six P C C slash six sub slash ninety-five percent C N S, no walk adjacent. To park, grade swale to drain F section, twenty-four alley, super elevated, lots forty-nine to fifty-two N T S pew and E V A E five ten point five, two percent min twelve percent max two percent driveway W slash house construction rolled curb per D T L twenty. S H T C zero four A six P C C, four comma zero 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 si min, slash six sub slash ninety-five percent C N S pew and E V A E twenty-four, five ten point five, three, two percent min V G two percent twelve percent max thirty-six valley gutter per D T L sixteen. S H T C zero four A rough grade driveway W slash house construction rolled curb per D T L twenty, S H T C zero four A G section, twenty-four alley, W slash rolled curb. Lots thirty-nine to forty-three and forty-four to forty-eight N T S Ecklmutter Tail asterisk Folsom Fresno seven thousand six hundred and forty-three North Ingram. Avenue, suite number one hundred and five Fresno California, nine three seven one one phone, five five nine, eight five three, four five zero five web. W W W dot M P E N G R dot com entitlement condo exhibit Russell Ranch Village five site plan for parcel map waiver and condominium purposes Copper View Folsom, C A Job No. Date May ninth, twenty twenty-five sheet X zero one of thirteen twenty-three dash zero zero four five dash zero zero D W G. X colon backslash two zero two three backslash two three hyphen zero zero four five hyphen zero zero, Russell Ranch Village five. Backslash D W G backslash ang backslash exhibits backslash twenty-five point zero five zero five R R V five condo exhibit. Twenty-three dash zero zero four five dash zero zero dot D W G saved, May ninth, twenty-five, one fifty-two P M Spitzer's and Russell Ranch Village five attachment five A P P R O V E D city of Folsom planning chemo zone by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five I N E drive trumpet V A P slash A C D veered C O patio thirty-six X three I six N G land C O V per teat A P slash A C D thirty-six X three D sixing land C O V per teat Russell Ranch Village five condominium plan three, four, and five. Plex site plan. March twentieth, twenty twenty-five cabinet, S, utility cabinet, S, utility A slash P C A D I net, S, cab utility D W G. X colon backslash two zero two three backslash two three hyphen zero zero four five hyphen zero zero, Russell Ranch Village five. Backslash D W G backslash ang backslash exhibits backslash twenty-five point zero three one eight. Condo exhibit dot D W G saved, March twentieth, twenty-five, five oh eight P M Orihatch grow drive project boundary ale court elm T R veered C O patio A slash P C A D X three six G three L six and in veered C O patio A slash C pad pad A slash C A slash C pad pad A slash C A slash C pad pad A slash C patio covered utility cabinet. S, utility cabinet, S, utility cabinet, S, utility cabinet, S, covered patio patio covered covered patio X three six G. Three L six and in E T, S, obentility C U E T, S, obentility C U patio covered A slash C pad landing three six X three six P A A D slash C three six X three six landing landing three six X three six covered patio veered C O patio three six X three six landing landing three six X three six A C O Ed P cover three six X three six landing patio covered A slash P C A D covered patio patio covered covered patio pad A slash C patio covered ending L A three six X three six A slash C pad pad A slash C A slash C pad pad A slash C covered patio aired C O V patio pad A slash C I net. S, utility cab U T tired P Cove covered patio A slash C pad pad A slash C patio covered covered patio A slash C pad A slash C pad six X three six G three landing. Patio covered utility cab I net, S, utility cabinet, S, utility cabinet, S, utility cabinet, S, utility cabinet, S, D R O A C H ran I R E M P, I net. S cab utility E T, S, cabin 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 utility A P slash cat A P slash cat veered C O patio thirty-six X thirty-six England veered C O patio A slash C pad A P slash cat overed C patio slash C C O V per teat A P A D patio cove N D I N G six law three six X three P A A D slash C pad slash C tired A C both patio red cove thirty-six X thirty-six England veered C O patio P A A D slash C patio cove law three N six Dixon three G six patio heard C O V P A A D slash C. E T, S, obentility C U A slash C pad pa slash D C A I net, S, cab utility A slash P C A D C O V per teat thirty-six X three D sixing land over teat slash C C pa A A D P veered C O patio A slash P C A D A P slash cat over teat C pa thirty-six X three D sixing land C O V per teat pad slash C A A D P A slash C pativo heard C O patio heard C O V bow de veered C pad slash C A ding in six X three six L three patio heard C O V pad slash C A T. S, bind C A utility U pa slash D C landing patio red cove ding law three N six X thirty-six D pa slash C covered patio A slash C pad covered patio A slash C pad three six X three six landing covered patio A slash C pad utility cabinet. S, three six X three six A C O red P O C pad slash C A. Utility cab I net, S, Rose T, S, bind C A utility U, I net, S cab utility L L I S T R A slash C D pa heard O V A C O C P six X thirty-six ding three lan A slash C P A D heard O V A C O C P six X thirty-six ding three lan A slash C D pa veridio C O pad heard O V A C O C P A slash C P A D veritio C O pa A slash C D pa pad slash C A patio heard C O V A D P A slash C patio heard C O V patio heard C O V P A A D slash C N D I N G six law six X three three A C O red P O C pad slash C A. I net, S cab utility project boundary T, S, bind C A utility U N D I N G three six law three six X pat vo heard C O pad slash C A T. S, bind C A utility U A slash C P A D A slash C D pa heard O V A C O C P six X thirty-six ding three lan. Heard O V A C O C P six X thirty-six ding three lan heard O V A C O slash C C P A P A D heard slash C C O V patio A P A D A slash C D pa heard O V A C O C P six X thirty-six ding three lan heard O V A C O slash C C P A P A D heard slash C C O V patio A P A D A slash C D pa heard O V A C O C P P A A D slash C A C O red P O C A D P A slash C patio heard C O V A C O red P O C pad slash C A N D I N three G six L A three six X patio heard C O V pad slash C A. I net, S cab utility lane T, S, bind C A utility U N D I N three G six L A three six X patio heard C O V A D P A slash C, I net, S cab utility T, S, bind C A utility U A slash C A slash C A slash P C A D verido C O pad six X thirty-sixing three N L A slash P C A D heard O V A C O C P heard O V A C O C P pad heard O V A C O C P A slash P C A D pad six X three sixing three N L heard O V A C O C P pad A slash C pad. A slash C patio covered landing three six X three six patio covered covered patio covered patio three six X three six landing A slash C pad A slash C pad utility cabinet. S, Wild Rose Lane utility cabinet, S, pad A slash C utility cabin T, S, A slash C pad pad A slash C covered patio patio covered cabinet. S, utility patio covered three six X three six landing landing three six X three six landing three six X three six covered patio patio covered patio covered utility cabinet. S, A slash C pad pad A slash C pad A slash C P A D slash C patio cove ending L A three six X three six pad C but viard A slash C C but viard P A slash C A D net, S, A B I C utility U lane T R E. L L I S A slash P C A D C O V patio heard three L six and X three six I N G C O V patio heard L A N three six X three D I N G six P Cove A C O red pa slash C D law three six X three N in six grams C O V patio heard A slash C P A D C O V A P A D air slash C D A P slash cat C O V patio heard L A N three six X three C O D I N G six patio heard pa slash C D L A N three six X three D I N G six P Cove A C O red patio utility cab I net. S, Rose utility cabin T, S, P A slash C A D A pad slash C C O V patio heard three L six and X three six I N G P Cove A C O red law three six X three N in six grams P Cove A C O red P A slash C A D C O V patio heard pa A slash C D C O V patio heard A slash C P A D C O V patio A P A D air slash C D A P A D slash C C pa of T O red A slash C pad P Cove A C O. Red L A N three six X three D I N G six P Cove A C O red P A A D slash C utility cab I net, S, three land six X three In six C O V patio heard A P A D slash C utility cabin T, S, utility cabin T, S, P A slash C A D P Cove A C O red law three six X three N in six grams P Cove A C O red pa slash C D P Cove A C O red pa A slash C D pa slash C C pa of T O red A slash C pad P Cove A C O. Red L A N three six X three D I N G six P Cove A C O red P A A D slash C utility cab I net, S, three land six X three In six C O V patio heard A P A D slash C utility cabin T, S, utility cabin T, S, P A slash C A D P Cove A C O red law three six X three N in six grams P Cove A C O red pa slash C D P Cove A C O red pa A slash C D pa slash C D P Cove A C O red L A N three six X three D I N G six C O V patio heard P A A D slash C utility cabin T, S, utility cab I net, S, three six X three six landing C O V patio heard A P A D slash C P A D A slash C pad A slash C patio covered B N A, S, utility C A cabinet. S, utility P A A D slash C A slash P C A D P A A D slash C A C O D C pa veered C O patio A P slash cat heard. C O V patio A slash C pad veered A slash C C O patio pad ending L A three six X three six graphic scale C but viard P A A D slash C zero seventy zero one hundred and forty cabinet. S, utility one in equals one hundred and forty feet thirty-six grams three L six act in A P slash cat heard C O V patio sheet one of eleven A P P R O V E D city of Folsom planning chemo zone by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five nap second floor Russell Ranch Village five condominium plan. Three plex, tip unit configuration, first floor, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five A C three second floor nap third floor third floor G three unit type three U three A C two G two unit type two U two D W G. X colon backslash two zero two three backslash two three hyphen zero zero four five hyphen zero zero. Russell Ranch Village five, backslash D W G backslash ang backslash exhibits backslash twenty-five point zero three one eight. Condo exhibit dot D W G saved, March twentieth, twenty-five, five oh eight P M Orihatch second floor unit type three R G three R U three R third floor legend nap second floor U two unit number G two garage element and assigned unit number A C three R A C two exclusive use area air conditioner and assigned unit number ten nap neighborhood association property building outline unit outline floor above or below third floor nap graphic scale five zero ten one in equals ten feet sheet two of eleven A P P R O V E D city of Folsom planning. Chemo zone by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five nap Russell Ranch Village five condominium plan. Three plex, tip unit configuration, second floor, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five nap third floor unit type three U three third floor first floor first floor unit type two U two D W G. X colon backslash two zero two three backslash two three hyphen zero zero four five hyphen zero zero, Russell Ranch Village five, backslash D W G backslash ang backslash exhibits backslash twenty-five point zero three one eight. Condo exhibit dot D W G saved, March twentieth, twenty-five, five oh eight P M Orihatch third floor unit type three R U three R nap legend U two unit number nap neighborhood association property building outline unit outline floor above. Or below first floor third floor nap graphic scale ten five zero ten one in equals ten feet sheet three of eleven A P P R O V E D city of Folsom planning chemo zone by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five nap Russell Ranch Village five condominium plan. Three plex, tip unit configuration, third floor, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five nap second floor unit type three U three second floor first floor first floor unit type two U two D W G. X colon backslash two zero two three backslash two three hyphen zero zero four five hyphen zero zero, Russell Ranch Village five, backslash D W G backslash ang backslash exhibits backslash twenty-five point zero three one eight. Condo exhibit dot D W G saved, March twentieth, twenty-five, five oh eight P M Orihatch second floor. Unit type three R U three R nap legend U two unit number nap neighborhood association property building outline unit outline floor above or below first floor second floor nap graphic scale ten five zero ten one in equals ten feet sheet four of eleven A P P R O V E D city of Folsom planning chemo zone by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Russell Ranch Village five condominium plan. Four plex, tip unit configuration, first floor, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five D W G. X colon backslash two zero two three backslash two three hyphen zero zero four five hyphen zero zero, Russell Ranch Village five, backslash D W G backslash ang backslash exhibits backslash twenty-five point zero three one eight. Condo. Exhibit dot D W G saved, March twentieth, twenty-five, five oh eight P M Orihatch third floor second floor third floor second floor nap A C three G three unit type three U three G two unit type two U two G one unit type one U one nap third floor A C two second floor A C one G three R unit type three R U three R third floor A C three R nap legend U two unit number G two garage element and assigned unit number A C two exclusive use area air conditioner and assigned unit number twenty nap neighborhood association property building outline unit outline floor above or below graphic scale ten zero twenty-one in equals twenty feet sheet. Five of eleven A P P R O V E D city of Folsom planning chemo zone by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Russell Ranch Village five condominium plan. Four plex, tip unit configuration, second floor, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five nap third floor first floor unit type three U three unit type two U two first floor unit type one U one third floor unit type three R U three R nap third floor first floor third floor first floor third floor nap nap D W G. X colon backslash two zero two three backslash two three hyphen zero zero four five hyphen zero zero, Russell Ranch Village five, backslash D W G backslash ang backslash exhibits backslash twenty-five point zero three one eight. Condo exhibit dot D W G saved, March twentieth, twenty-five, five oh eight P M. Orihatch legend U two unit number nap neighborhood association property building outline unit outline floor above or below graphic scale twenty ten zero twenty-one in equals twenty feet sheet six of eleven A P P R O V E D city of Folsom planning chemo zone by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Russell Ranch Village five condominium plan. Four plex, tip unit configuration, third floor, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five nap second floor unit type three U three first floor unit type two U two unit type one U one second floor unit type three R U three R nap nap second floor first floor first. Floor second floor nap D W G, X colon backslash two zero two three backslash two three hyphen zero zero four five hyphen zero zero, Russell Ranch Village five, backslash D W G backslash ang backslash exhibits backslash twenty-five point zero three one eight. Condo exhibit dot D W G saved, March twentieth, twenty-five, five oh eight P M Orihatch legend U two unit number nap neighborhood association property building outline unit outline floor above or below graphic scale twenty ten zero twenty-one in equals twenty feet sheet seven of eleven A P P R O V E D city of Folsom planning chemo zone by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Russell Ranch Village five condominium plan. Five plex, tip unit configuration, first floor, March. Twenty, twenty twenty-five nap nap A C three third floor second floor G three unit type three U three G two unit type two U two G one unit type one U one third floor A C two second floor A C one D W G. X colon backslash two zero two three backslash two three hyphen zero zero four five hyphen zero zero, Russell Ranch Village five, backslash D W G backslash ang backslash exhibits backslash twenty-five point zero three one eight. Condo exhibit dot D W G saved, March twentieth, twenty-five, five oh eight P M Orihatch third floor second floor G two R unit type two R U two R A C two R G three R unit type three R U three R third floor A C three R nap nap legend U two unit number G two garage element and assigned unit number A C two exclusive use area air conditioner and assigned unit number twenty nap. Neighborhood association property building outline unit outline floor above or below graphic scale ten zero twenty-one in equals twenty feet sheet eight of eleven A P P R O V E D city of Folsom planning chemo zone by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Russell Ranch Village five condominium plan. Five plex, tip unit configuration, second floor, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five D W G. X colon backslash two zero two three backslash two three hyphen zero zero four five hyphen zero zero, Russell Ranch Village five, backslash D W G backslash ang backslash exhibits backslash twenty-five point zero three one eight. Condo exhibit dot D W G saved, March twentieth, twenty-five, five oh eight P M Orihatch third floor unit type three U three first floor. Unit type two U two unit type one U one first floor unit type two R U two R third floor unit type three R U three R nap legend U two unit number nap neighborhood association property building outline unit outline floor above or below nap third floor first floor third floor first floor third floor nap graphic scale twenty ten zero twenty-one in equals twenty feet sheet nine of eleven A P P R O V E D city of Folsom planning chemo zone by underscore J K underscore in underscore K underscore A underscore D underscore E underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five Russell Ranch Village five condominium plan. Five plex, tip unit configuration, third floor. March twentieth, twenty twenty-five nap nap second floor unit type three U three first floor first floor first floor unit type two U two unit type one U one unit type two R U two R second floor unit type three R U three R first floor second floor first floor D W G. X colon backslash two zero two three backslash two three hyphen zero zero four five hyphen zero zero, Russell Ranch Village five, backslash D W G backslash ang backslash exhibits backslash twenty-five point zero three one eight. Condo exhibit dot D W G saved, March twentieth, twenty-five, five oh eight P M Orihatch legend U two unit number nap neighborhood association property building outline unit outline floor above or below nap graphic scale twenty ten zero twenty-one in equals twenty feet sheet ten of eleven A P P R O. E D city of Folsom planning chemo e d city of folsom planning chemo zone by underscore j k underscore in underscore k underscore a underscore t underscore e underscore underscore date underscore zero underscore seven slash underscore two underscore five slash underscore two underscore zero underscore two underscore five russell ranch village five condominium plan condominium common area diagram three four and five plex configuration march twentieth twenty twenty five extends upwards to infinity to infinity extends upwards upper elev upper elev project boundary ten point zero neighborhood association property condominium common area residential airspace element finished floor elev garage airspace element project boundary finished grade neighborhood association property extends to the center of the earth d w g x colon backslash two zero two three backslash two three hyphen zero zero four five hyphen zero zero russell ranch village five backslash d w g backslash ang backslash exhibits backslash twenty five point zero three one eight condo exhibit dot d w g saved march twentieth twenty five five oh eight p m orib extends to the center of the earth typical section not to scale sheet eleven of eleven attachment six conditions of approval for the russell ranch phase two village five project m s t r twenty five dash zero 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 nine four tentative parcel map waiver residential condominiums design review and inclusionary housing plan condition mitigation condition of approval win required responsible no measure department general conditions one development plan the owner slash applicant shall submit final site development plans to the community development department that shall substantially conform to the exhibits referenced below one preliminary site plan for map waiver and condominium purposes dated may ninth twenty twenty five two russell ranch phase two village five design review submittal dated may sixth twenty twenty five site plan exterior elevations building plans floor plans color slash material board alternate color scheme color scheme plotting three landscaping plans dated may eighth twenty twenty five g i b c d p e the design review is approved for the development of a one eighteen unit residential project russell ranch phase two village five implementation of the project shall be consistent with the above referenced items the folsom plan area specific plan thbasp as amended and these conditions of approval two parcel map waiver the owner slash applicant shall submit final site development plans to the city engineer for review and approval that shall substantially conform to the exhibits referenced below i b c d e one preliminary site plan for map waiver and condominium purposes dated may ninth twenty twenty five two draft condominium plan dated march twentieth twenty twenty five three draft covenants conditions and restrictions c c and ours the parcel map waiver is approved for the development of a one eighteen unit residential condominium project russell ranch phase two village five implementation of the project shall be consistent with the above referenced items the folsom plan area specific plan thbasp as amended and these conditions of approval three community development department subsequent review building plans and all civil engineering improvement landscape and irrigation g i b c d p e b plans shall be submitted to the community development department for review and approval to ensure conformance with this approval and with relevant codes policies standards and other requirements of the city of folsom four ninety day protest period the conditions of project approval set forth herein include certain fees dedication requirements reservation requirements and other exactions pursuant to government code section six six zero two zero d these conditions constitute written notice of the amount of such fees and a description of the dedications reservations and other exactions o c d e p the applicant is hereby notified that the ninety day protest period commencing from the date of approval of the project has begun if the applicant fails to file a protest regarding any of the fees dedication requirements reservation requirements or other exaction contained in this notice complying with all the requirements of government code section sixty six thousand and twenty the applicant will be legally barred from later challenging such exactions five validity the project approvals granted under this staff report parcel map waiver design review shall remain in effect for two years from final date of approval b c d p expires july twenty third twenty twenty seven failure to obtain the relevant building or other permits within this time period without the subsequent extension of this approval shall result in the termination of this approval an extension to the identified timeframe may be granted by the planning commission if after approval of this project a lawsuit is filed which seeks to invalidate any approval building permit or other construction permit or entitlement required in connection with any of the activities or construction authorized by the project approvals or to enjoin the development contemplated herein or to challenge the issuance by any governmental agency of any environmental document or exemption determination the project approvals shall be told during the time that any litigation is pending including any appeals six indemnity for city the owner slash applicant shall protect defend indemnify and hold harmless the city and its agents officers and employees from any claim action or proceeding against the city or its agents officers or employees to attack set aside void or annul any approval by the city or any of its agencies departments commissions agents officers employees or legislative body concerning the project which claim action or proceeding is brought within the time period provided therefore in government code section sixty six thousand four hundred and ninety nine point three seven or other applicable statutes of limitation the city will promptly notify the owner slash applicant of any o c d p e b such claim action or proceeding and will cooperate fully in the defense the p w p r f d city may within its unlimited discretion participate in the defense of any such p d claim action or proceeding if both of the following occur the city bears its own attorney's fees and costs and the city defends the claim action or proceeding in good faith the owner slash applicant shall not be required to pay or perform any settlement of such claim action or proceeding unless the settlement is approved by the owner slash applicant the owner slash applicant's obligations under this condition shall apply regardless of whether a parcel map is ultimately recorded with respect to this project seven arda compliance the owner slash applicant shall comply with all provisions of amendment number one to the b c d e first amended and restated tier one development agreement arda applicable to the subject property the second amendment thereto and any approved amendments thereafter by and between the city and the owner slash applicant of the project eight backbone infrastructure plan m c d e p w the owner slash applicant and all subsequent applicants heirs and successors with intention of developing the property are required to provide to the community development department for review and approval by the city engineer a backbone infrastructure plan additional studies and supporting documentation may also be required as part of this condition as provided for in the arda amendment number one and the thbasp the owner slash applicant shall provide fully executed grant deeds legal descriptions and plats for all necessary rights of way public utility easements public water main easements public sewer easements irrevocable offers of dedication and temporary construction easement all required easements as listed necessary for the backbone infrastructure shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer and recorded with the sacramento county recorder pursuant to the timing requirements set for in section three point eight of the arda and any amendments thereto nine russell ranch lots twenty four through thirty two subdivision project compliance o c d p e b all conditions of approval from the russell ranch lots twenty four through thirty two p w p r f d subdivision project p n seventeen dash two eighty eight as modified by these conditions including land p d dedications that are yet to be completed are hereby incorporated by reference ten homeowners association o c d p a homeowners association shall be established to maintain the common areas of the community as defined in the community conditions covenants and restrictions c c and ours eleven disclosures the owner slash applicant shall disclose to the homeowners in the community conditions covenants and restrictions c c and ours the following items c c and ours are to be reviewed and approved by the community development department one the project site is located directly adjacent to white rock road where the capital southeast connector roadway project is under construction the owner slash applicant shall disclose that the capital southeast connector roadway may generate noise and lighting impacts associated with motor vehicle traffic during all hours of the day and night two the soil at the project site may contain naturally occurring asbestos and naturally occurring arsenic three the collecting digging or removal of any stone artifact or other prehistoric or historic object located in public or open space areas and o the disturbance of any archaeological site or historic property is prohibited c d p four the project site is located close to the mather airport flight path and overflight noise may be present at various times five that all properties located within one mile of an on or off site area zoned or used for agricultural use including livestock grazing shall be accompanied by written disclosure from the transferrer in a form approved by the city of folsom advising the owner slash applicant and renters of the potential adverse odor impacts from surrounding agricultural operations which disclosure shall direct the transferee to contact the county of sacramento concerning any such property within the county zoned for agricultural uses within one mile of the subject property being transferred twelve thirteen fourteen fifteen mitigation monitoring and reporting program the owner slash applicant shall participate in a mitigation monitoring and reporting program pursuant to city council resolution number two thousand six hundred and thirty four and public resources code twenty one thousand and eighty one point six the mitigation monitoring and reporting measures identified in the folsom plan area specific plan fire slash e i s the south of fifty backbone infrastructure project m n d the russell ranch project e i r m m r p as amended by the russell ranch lots twenty four to thirty two subdivision addendum m m r p the city of folsom twenty thirty five general plan amendments for increased residential capacity project and the folsom south of us highway fifty specific plan project revised proposed offsite water facility alternative amendment to the thbasp an addendum to the thbasp e i r slash e i s have been incorporated into these conditions of approval by reference in order to mitigate or avoid significant effects on the environment applicant shall fund on a time and materials basis all mitigation monitoring e g staff and consultant time development costs and fee requirements applicable taxes fees and charges the owner slash applicant shall pay all applicable taxes fees and charges for the project at the rate and amount required by the public facilities financing plan and amendments number one and number two to the amended and restated tier one development agreement existing assessments if applicable the owner slash applicant shall pay off any existing assessments against the property or file necessary segregation request and pay applicable fees use of outside legal counsel and consultants the city at its sole discretion may utilize the services of outside legal counsel to assist in the implementation of this project including but not limited to drafting reviewing and slash or revising agreements and slash or other documentation for the project if the city utilizes the services of such outside legal counsel the city shall provide notice to the owner slash applicant of the outside counsel selected the scope of work and hourly rates and the owner slash applicant shall reimburse the city for all outside legal fees and costs incurred and documented by the city for such services the owner slash applicant may be required at the sole discretion of the city attorney to submit a deposit to the city for these services prior to initiation of the services the owner slash applicant shall be responsible for reimbursement to the city for the services regardless of whether a deposit is required i g b o g b b o c d e p p w f d e w r p d p r c d p e c d e c d p e sixteen special study reimbursement if the city utilizes the services of consultants to prepare special studies or provide specialized design review or inspection services for the project the city shall provide notice to the owner slash applicant of the outside consultant selected g i b c d p e the scope of work and hourly rates and the owner slash applicant shall reimburse the city for actual costs incurred and documented in utilizing these services including administrative costs for city personnel a deposit for these services shall be provided prior to initiating review of the grading plan parcel map improvement plans or beginning inspection whichever is applicable seventeen development impact fees the owner slash applicant shall be subject to all folsom plan area specific plan area development impact fees established at the time of approval consistent with the public facilities financing plan p f f p development agreement and amendments thereto unless exempt by previous agreement the owner slash applicant shall be subject to all applicable folsom plan area planwide development impact fees in effect at the time of approval at the rates in effect b c d p p w p k when a building permit is issued these fees may include but are not limited to the folsom plan area specific plan fee specific plan infrastructure fee s p i f solid waste fee corporation yard fee transportation management fee transit fee highway fifty interchange fee general park equipment fee housing trust fee etc any protest to such for all fees dedications reservations or other exactions imposed on this project will begin on the date of final approval or otherwise shall be governed by the terms of amendments number one and two to the amended and restated tier one development agreement arda the fees shall be calculated at the fee rate set forth in the p f f p and the arda eighteen school district fees the owner slash applicant agrees to pay to the folsom court of a unified school district the maximum fee authorized by law for the construction and slash or b c d p reconstruction of school facilities the applicable fee shall be the fee established by the school district that is in effect at the time of the issuance of a building permit specifically the owner slash applicant agrees to pay any and all fees and charges and comply with any and all dedications or other requirements authorized under section seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty of the education code chapter four point seven commencing with section sixty five thousand nine hundred and seventy of the government code and section sixty five thousand nine hundred and ninety five sixty five thousand nine hundred and ninety five point five and sixty five thousand nine hundred and ninety five point seven of the government code map requirements nineteen digital copy of map m b c d e the owner slash applicant shall provide a digital copy of the recorded certificate of compliance parcel map in autocad format to the community development department condition modified at the july twenty third twenty twenty five planning commission hearing twenty provide f g s map m b c d p the owner slash applicant shall provide the folsom court of a unified school district with a copy of the recorded certificate of compliance parcel map condition modified at the july twenty third twenty twenty five planning commission hearing twenty one street names the applicant shall use street names as shown in the folsom plan area specific plan and in the case of unnamed streets select street names from the m c d p e cities approved list or subsequently approved by the planning commission for the recorded certificate of compliance parcel map condition modified at the july twenty third twenty twenty five planning commission hearing twenty two private easement dedication b c d e the owner slash applicant shall dedicate private easements for utilities drainage water and sanitary sewer on the parcel map as exhibits attached to the certificate of compliance prior to issuance of a building permit condition modified at the july twenty third twenty twenty five planning commission hearing twenty three reciprocal access m c d e the owner slash applicant shall dedicate a reciprocal access easement for common use of the project driveways on internal streets and drive aisles twenty four inclusionary housing agreement and inclusionary housing agreement consistent with the inclusionary housing plan approved by the planning commission and in a form acceptable to the m c d e c a city attorney shall be executed prior to recordation of the certificate of compliance for the condominium map waiver for the russell ranch phase two village five project twenty five public facilities financing plan m p f f p m b the owner slash applicant shall be subject to all thresholds timelines and deadlines c d d e p b for the construction and final completion of various improvements for the entire p w f d e w r folsom plan area the various improvements are outlined and detailed in the pr folsom plan area specific plan public facilities financing plan p f f p dated january twenty eighth two thousand and fourteen and adopted by city of folsom resolution number nine P F F P, dated January twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen and adopted by City of Folsom Resolution Number nine thousand two hundred and ninety-eight. These improvements in the P F F P include, but are not limited to, the backbone infrastructure water, water reservoirs, booster pump stations, pressure-reducing valve stations, et cetera, and sanitary sewer, lift stations, systems, roadway, and transportation, future interchanges, major arterial roadways, et cetera, improvements, aquatic center, community pool, parks, fire stations, municipal services center, community library, et cetera. The thresholds and timelines included in the P F F P require facilities to be constructed and completed based on number of building permits issued and in some cases, number of residential units that are occupied. The owner slash applicant shall be required to address these thresholds and timelines as the project moves forward through the various development stages and shall be subject to the various fair share requirements, subject to the provisions of the P F F P, the A R T A, and the First Amendment thereto. Twenty-six lots thirteen and fourteen M C D, E, the owner slash applicant shall dedicate an easement over, under, through, and across Russell Ranch Phase Two Large Lot Map Lots thirteen and fourteen to the City of Folsom for purposes of access to and maintenance of storm drainage and trail improvements. This shall include allowing future trail construction to commence as part of the connector but does not include constructing any portion of the future on slash off-ramp tied to the interchange work. Prior to commencement of the future construction of the interchange, the dedication of lots thirteen and fourteen to the City of Folsom shall occur after compensation is provided to the owner slash applicant in accordance with the Agreement for Right-of-Way Dedication and Acquisition for the Main Line D three segment of the Capital Southeast Connector between the New Home Company Russell Ranch, L L C, and the Capital Southeast Connector Joint Powers Authority, recorded February twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen as instrument number twenty million one hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and twenty-five page. Three hundred between the owner slash applicant as successor and the J P A Connector. Twenty-seven previous small lot tentative subdivision map M C D, E, upon filing of the Certificate of Compliance for the One Lot Residential Condominium Map for Russell Ranch Phase Two, Village Five by the city engineer with the county recorder, the previously approved small lot vesting tentative subdivision map for Village Five showing one hundred and eighteen fee simple townhome lots, dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, shall become null and void. Grading permit requirements twenty-eight. Mining activity remediation the owner slash applicant shall locate and remediate all antiquated mine shafts, drifts, open cuts, tunnels, and water conveyance or impoundment structures existing G, C, D, E, on the project site, with specific recommendations for the sealing, filling, or removal of each that meet all applicable health, safety, and engineering standards. Recommendations shall be prepared by an appropriately licensed engineer or geologist. All remedial plans shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to approval of grading plans. Twenty-nine state and federal permits the owner slash applicant shall obtain all required state and federal permits and G, I, C, D, P, E, provide evidence that said permits have been obtained, or that the permit is not required, subject to staff review prior to approval of any grading or improvement plan. Thirty retaining wall review the final location, design, height, materials, and colors of all retaining walls are G, I, B, C, D, P, E, F, D subject to review and approval by the Community Development Department. Improvement Plan Requirements thirty-one. Improvement Plan Review the improvement plans for the required public and private improvements B, C, D, E, necessary to serve the project shall be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department prior to approval of a building permit for the project. Thirty-two improvement compliance public and private improvements, including roadways, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, bicycle lanes and trails, street lights, underground infrastructure, and all other I C D, P, E, improvements shall be provided in accordance with the latest edition of the City of Folsom Standard Construction Specifications and Details and the Design and Procedures Manual and Improvement Standards and to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Thirty-three site modification review any modifications to the existing site shall be submitted for review and approval by the Community Development Department. I C D, P, E, public and private improvements, including roadways, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, bicycle lanes and trails, street lights, underground infrastructure, and all other improvements shall be provided in accordance with the latest edition of the City of Folsom Standard Construction Specifications and Details and the Design and Procedures Manual and Improvement Standards. Thirty-four improvement completion public and private improvements, including roadways, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, bicycle lanes and trails, street lights, underground infrastructure, and all other O C D, P, E, improvements shall be completed prior to the first Certificate of Occupancy for the project, to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Thirty-five design guidelines compliance walls and fencing the final location, design, height, materials, and colors of the sound walls and fencing shall be subject to review and approval by the Community Development Department to ensure consistency with the Russell Ranch Specific Plan Design Guidelines. In addition, decorative pilasters are to be placed at all corners and shall also be placed approximately at a distance approved by the city G, I, B, C, D, P, E, F, D engineer, no closer than every fifty-three hundred feet on center to break up long expanses of the walls along the property boundaries. Condition modified at the July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission Hearing, thirty-six. On-site water and sewer the on-site water and sewer systems shall be privately owned and maintained I C D, E, and are required to follow city standards. The fire protection system shall be separate from the domestic water system. The fire system shall be constructed to meet the National Fire Protection Association Standard twenty-four. The domestic water and irrigation system shall be metered per City of Folsom Standard Construction Specifications. A sewer manhole shall be placed at the property line that differentiates public V S privately owned sewer systems for access, maintenance, and inspection. Thirty-seven lighting plan review the owner slash applicant of all project phases shall submit a lighting plan for the I C D, P, project to the Community Development Department. The lighting plan shall be consistent with the Russell Ranch Specific Plan Design Guidelines. All lighting shall be designed to be shielded and directed downward onto the project site and away from adjacent properties and public rights of way. Thirty-eight utility agency coordination the owner slash applicant shall coordinate the planning, development, and I M C D, P, E, completion of this project with the various utility agencies, i.e., S M U D, P G, N E, et cetera. The owner slash applicant shall provide the city with written confirmation of public utility service prior to recordation of the Certificate of Compliance approval of the parcel map. Condition modified at the July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission Hearing, thirty-nine. Replacement of damaged facilities the owner slash applicant shall be responsible for replacing any, and all damaged or I, O, C, D, E, hazardous public sidewalk, curb, and gutter, and slash or bicycle trail facilities along the site frontage and slash or boundaries, including pre-existing conditions and construction damage, to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Forty power lines underground all future utility lines lower than sixty-nine K V that are to be built within the project shall be placed underground within and along the perimeter of the project at the I C D, E, owner slash applicant's cost. The owner slash applicant shall dedicate to S M U D all necessary underground easements for the electrical facilities that will be necessary to service development of the project. Forty-one water meters the owner slash applicant shall pay for, furnish, and install all infrastructure I C D, E, E, W, R associated with the Water Meter Fixed Network System for any city-owned and maintained water meter for the project. Forty-two service easements the owner slash applicant shall provide sanitary sewer, water, storm drainage, and trail improvements with corresponding easements, as necessary, in accordance with these studies and the latest edition of the City of Folsom Standard Construction Specifications and Details, and the Design and Procedures Manual G, I, B, C, D, E, E, W, R, P, W, and improvement standards and to the satisfaction of the city engineer. The storm drainage design shall provide for no net increase in runoff under post-development conditions. Forty-three storm drain improvement plans the storm drain improvement plans shall provide for best management practices that meet the requirements of the water quality standards of the city's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit issued by the State Regional Water Quality Control Board. G, I, C, D, E, in addition to compliance with city ordinances, the owner slash applicant shall prepare a Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, S W P P P, and implement best management practices, B M Ps, that comply with the General Construction Storm Water Permit from the Central Valley R W Q C B, to reduce water quality effects during construction. Detailed information about the S W P P P and B M Ps are provided in Chapter three eight point nine, Hydrology and Water Quality. Forty-four litter control during construction, the owner slash applicant shall be responsible for litter control O, C, D, E, and sweeping of all paved surfaces in accordance with city standards. All on-site storm drains shall be cleaned immediately before the official start of the rainy season, October fifteenth. Forty-five public utility easements the owner slash applicant shall dedicate public utility easements as needed for underground public facilities on properties adjacent to the public streets. A minimum of twelve and one-half foot, twelve point five, wide public utility easements for I C D, E, underground facilities, i.e., S M U D, Pacific Gas, and Electric, Cable Television, Telephone, shall be dedicated adjacent to all public rights of way. The owner slash applicant shall dedicate additional width to accommodate extraordinary facilities as determined by the city. The width of the public utility easements adjacent to public right of way may be reduced with prior approval from public utility companies. Forty-six management of tribal cultural resources D, C, C, D, P, E, should any indications of possible tribal cultural resources, T C Rs, such as cultural features, unusual amounts of bone or shell, or cultural belongings be encountered during any construction activities, work shall be suspended in the vicinity of the find and the appropriate oversight agency, I E S, shall be notified immediately. The appropriate oversight agency, I E S, shall retain a tribal representative or tribal historic preservation officer, T H P O, who shall assess the significance of the find by evaluating the resource to determine if it is a T C R as defined in Section twenty-one thousand and seventy-four of the Public Resources Code. If the resource is a T C R as defined in state law, and it would be subject to disturbance or destruction, the city shall consult with the T H P O or their designee to determine the appropriate treatment before resuming construction activities at the T C R. Architecture slash site design requirements forty-seven. Architecture and design requirements the project shall comply with the following architecture and design requirements. A the approval is for three three-story building plans, three unit types with four color and material options providing twelve individual expressions. The applicant shall submit building plans that comply with this approval and the Russell Ranch Phase Two Village Five Design Review Submital dated May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, included in Attachment eight. B the design, materials, and colors of the proposed project shall be consistent with the building elevations, color renderings, material samples, and color scheme to the satisfaction of the Community Development Department. B, C, D, P, B, C. The Community Development Department shall approve the individual building permits to assure no duplication or repetition of the same color scheme side by side or across the street from each other. D all mechanical equipment shall be ground mounted and be shielded by landscaping or trellis-type features. Equipment shall be properly ventilated and accessible for maintenance. E utility equipment such as transformers, electric, and gas meters, electrical panels, and junction boxes shall be screened by walls and or landscaping. Forty-eight waste enclosures B, C, D, P, the final design, materials, and colors of the waste enclosures are subject to review and approval by the Community Development Department. The enclosures shall be painted to match a primary building color of the residential units. Forty-nine waste collection plan O P W the final location and specifications of the waste enclosures shall be subject to review and approval by the City of Folsom Solid Waste Division. Fifty monument signage the final location, height, size, and design of any future monument sign shall be B, C, D, P, subject to review and approval by the Community Development Department to ensure consistency with the requirements of the Folsom Municipal Code, F M C, Section one seven point five nine point zero four zero D. In addition, the owner slash applicant shall obtain a sign permit prior to installation of any monument sign. Landscape slash tree preservation requirements fifty-one. Final landscape plans by registered landscape architect final landscape plans and specifications shall be prepared by a registered landscape architect and approved by the city prior to the approval of the first building permit. Said plans shall include all on-site landscape specifications and details including a tree planting exhibit demonstrating sufficient diversity and appropriate species selection to the satisfaction of the Community Development Department. The tree exhibit shall include all street trees, accent trees, parking lot shading trees, and mitigation trees proposed within the development. Said plans shall comply with all state and local rules, regulations, governor's declarations, and restrictions pertaining to water conservation and outdoor landscaping. B, C, D, P, A, landscaping shall meet shade requirements as outlined in the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan where applicable. The landscape plans shall comply and implement water efficient requirements as adopted by the State of California, Assembly Bill one thousand eight hundred and eighty-one, State Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, until such time the City of Folsom adopts its own water efficient landscape ordinance at which time the owner slash applicant shall comply with any new ordinance. Shade and ornamental trees shall be maintained according to the most current American national standards for tree care operations, N C A three hundred, by qualified tree care professionals. Tree topping for height reduction, view protection, light clearance, or any other purpose shall not be allowed. Specialty style pruning, such as pollarding, shall be specified within the approved landscape plans and shall be implemented during a five-year establishment and training period. The owner slash applicant shall comply with citywide landscape rules or regulations on water usage. The owner slash applicant shall comply with any state or local rules and regulations relating to landscape water usage and landscaping requirements necessitated to mitigate for drought conditions on all landscaping in the project area. Fifty-two ongoing landscape maintenance the owner slash applicant shall be responsible for on-site landscape maintenance throughout the life of the project to the satisfaction of the Community Development Department. Vegetation or planting shall not be less than that B, O, C, D, P, A, depicted on the final landscape plan unless tree removal is approved by the Community Development Department because the spacing between trees will be too close on center as they mature. Fifty-three utility line placement B, C, D, P, A, utility lines and equipment shall not be located in landscape areas in such a way as to obstruct the planting of street trees or parking lot shade tree as shown in the final approved landscape plans. Noise requirements fifty-four. Noise measures, Russell Ranch E I R mitigation measure four point six dash three, A, updated per two thousand and eighteen checklist, N, C. Based on the recommendations of the noise analysis prepared for the Russell Ranch Lots twenty-four through thirty-two project, the following conditions of approval shall be implemented to the satisfaction of the Community Development Department, noise barriers in conjunction with the submittal of improvement plans for each proposed development phase where noise barrier locations are recommended, the owner slash applicant shall show on the improvement B plans that sound walls and slash or landscaped berms shall be constructed along U S fifty, White Rock Road, and Empire Ranch Road. The specific height and locations of the noise barriers shall be confirmed based upon the final approved site and grading plans. All required wall heights shall be relative to finished building pad elevations. Noise barrier walls shall be constructed of concrete masonry units, as required in the planned development guidelines. Abrupt transitions exceeding two feet in height shall be avoided. The grading and slash or improvement plans shall be subject to review and approval by the city engineer. C, D, P, B, alternatively, and at the owner slash applicant's request and in the city's discretion, the owner slash applicant may submit a site-specific acoustical analysis for a specific development phase where noise barrier locations are recommended, that is prepared by an acoustical consultant approved by the City of Folsom to determine and confirm whether sound attenuation is needed, taking into account site-specific conditions, e.g. site design, location of structures, building characteristics, building, orientation, et cetera, in accordance with adopted noise standards. If sound attenuation is determined by the city to be necessary, the site-specific acoustical analysis shall the site-specific acoustical analysis shall identify measures to reduce noise impacts to meet the city's noise standards at these locations, including, but not limited to, constructing exterior sound walls, constructing barrier walls and slash or berms with vegetation, or other alternative attenuation solution acceptable to the city, provided that the improvement plans or proposed alternative solution will meet the adopted city noise standard. The acoustical analysis shall also take into consideration sound attenuation mitigation that may be required of parcels adjacent to the noise barriers. Figure four point one two to one shows where noise barriers are required in response to the site-specific noise analysis done for the Russell Ranch lots twenty-four to thirty-two project. In conjunction with submittal of building permits, the owner slash applicant shall show on the plans that mechanical ventilation shall be installed in all residential uses to allow residents to keep doors and windows closed, as desired for acoustical isolation. The building plans shall be subject to review and approval by the City Community Development Department. Fifty-five construction hours: Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan E I R slash E I S mitigation B C D P B, Measure three A point eleven dash one, noise generating construction operations shall be limited to the hours between seven A M and seven P M Monday through Friday, and between eight A M and five P M on Saturdays. No construction is allowed on Sundays. Parks and Recreation Requirements fifty-six. Pedestrian connection: The owner slash applicant shall provide a pedestrian connection from the project site to the future Class I multipurpose trail located on the north side of White Rock I, G C D P E P R Road. The final location and design of the pedestrian connection be subject to review and approval by the city engineer. Fire department requirements fifty-seven. The owner slash applicant shall comply with the following fire department requirements: All buildings shall have illuminated addresses visible from the street or drive fronting the property. Size and location of address identification shall be reviewed and approved by the fire marshal. Prior to the issuance of any improvement plans or building permits, the Community Development and Fire Departments shall review and approve all detailed design plans for accessibility of emergency fire equipment, fire hydrant flow location, and other construction features. G I B C D P F D: All fire protection devices shall be designed to be located on-site; fire hydrants, fire department connections, post indicator valves, et cetera cannot be used to serve the building. A water model analysis that proves the minimum fire flow will be required before any permits are issued. The fire sprinkler riser location shall be inside a fire control room, five X seven minimum, with a full-sized three-zero door. This room can be shared with other building utilities. The room shall only be accessible from the exterior. All weather emergency access roads and fire hydrants, tested and flushed, shall be provided before combustible material or vertical construction is allowed on-site. All weather access is defined as six of compacted A B from May first to September thirtieth and two A C over six A B from October first to April thirtieth. Police/Security Requirement fifty-eight. The owner slash applicant shall consult with the police department to incorporate all reasonable crime prevention measures. The following security slash safety measures shall be considered: A. Security guard on duty at all times at the site or a six-foot security fence G I B P D shall be constructed around the perimeter of construction areas. Security measures for the safety of all construction equipment and unit appliances. Landscaping shall not cover exterior doors or windows, block line of sight at intersections or screen overhead lighting. Miscellaneous requirements fifty-nine. Transfer of development rights should there be a desire to transfer unused allocated residential dwelling units from the subject V F A S P parcel to another V F A S P parcel that meets the criteria M C D P of V F A S P Section thirteen point three Administrative Procedures: A Minor Administrative Modification Request shall be submitted to the Planning Division for review and approval prior to recordation of the parcel map waiver. Responsible department when required C D Community Development Department I prior to approval of improvement plans, P, Planning Division M prior to approval of final map, E, Engineering Division Recordation of Certificate of, B, Building Division Compliance, A, City Arborist slash Urban Forester B prior to issuance of first building permit O prior to approval of occupancy permit G prior to issuance of grading permit P W Public Works Department D C during construction P R Park and Recreation Department O G. Ongoing requirement P D Police Department F D Fire Department, Table Modified at the July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission Hearing, Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date, August twelfth, twenty twenty-five Agenda Section, Consent Calendar Subject: Resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and forty-four, A. Resolution approving the donation of specified pieces of the original Folsom Kids Play Castle Park play structure to Folsom Kids Play, For Generations, Incorporated from Parks and Recreation Department Recommendation slash Council Action Staff Recommend the City Council Approve Resolution Number eleven thousand four hundred and forty-four, A. Resolution approving the donation of specified pieces of the original Folsom Kids Play Castle Park play structure to Folsom Kids Play, For Generations, Inc. The donated materials would be used for two purposes: to be repaired and reinstalled in the park, or to be repurposed into lawn art and sold as part of the fundraising initiative to help rebuild the play structure. Background: Folsom Kids Play Park, known as Castle Park, is located at two oh one Pruitt Drive just south of Oak Chan Elementary School in the Willow Creek Estates South neighborhood. Covering two point one acres, the park is home to the beloved castle-themed wooden playground Castle Park, designed by Robert Leathers and built by the community in nineteen ninety-six. Along with the wooden play structures, the park features many ceramic tile artworks, many of which were created during the original community build. A commemorative wall and several pillars display hand-painted ceramic tiles that were purchased as part of the park's first fundraising campaign. Attachment two. There are free-form concrete seat walls decorated with nature-themed tiles donated by Oak Chan Elementary School students. Attachment three. An asundial, set atop a concrete pedestal, showcases a Folsom history timeline rendered in hand-painted ceramic tiles painted by local artists. Over time, some of the hand-painted tiles have faded or been damaged, and the wooden play structures have reached the end of their useful life. With repairs no longer practical and would no longer considered ideal material for playgrounds, the city has made the decision to completely rebuild the play structures. The new design will use modern, durable materials while staying within the original thirteen comma zero 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 square foot footprint. One, the total estimated cost of the Kids Play Park renovation project, Project P K two five zero one, is one point one million dollars. As part of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five budget, the City Council approved eight hundred thousand dollars toward the project out of the general fund. The City Council agreed the three hundred thousand dollars shortfall would be provided by the five oh one, C, three, organization, Folsom Kids Play For Generations, Inc., F K P F G. As part of their fundraising efforts, F K P F G proposed the idea of turning specific parts of the original wooden play structure into yard totems to sell to donors. Attachment four. Orders would be collected in advance, and based on the number of sales, wood would be salvaged from the structure prior to its dismantling in September twenty twenty-five. This would be a one-time opportunity exclusively for donors, with only the amount of wood needed to fulfill orders being reclaimed. In addition to raising funds, F K P F G also aims to refurbish select wooden pieces from the original structure and some of the ceramic tiles that have begun to fade or have been damaged. These restored pieces will be potentially incorporated into the new playground design. Approximately twelve wood pieces are being removed from the structure by K P F G. These items include things such as the Taut Lot sign, the dragon, the dollhouses, et cetera. Attachment five. All identified pieces, both wood and ceramic, would be removed by F K P F G prior to the playground's dismantling in September twenty twenty-five. Any potential reinstallation of these pieces would need to be coordinated with and approved by staff. The timing would align with the community build phase of the project and be carried out by F K P F G. Staff feel that restoring and reusing these cherished elements is a meaningful way to honor the playground's history by breathing new life into pieces that might otherwise be discarded. Policy/Rule Folsom Municipal Code, Section two point three six point two two zero per this code, the City Council may, by resolution, authorize the donation of surplus personal property if the City Council finds that such donation serves a public purpose and slash or benefit. All donations pursuant to this section shall be as is without warranty, express, or implied, and the transferee shall agree to defend, indemnify, and hold harmless the city, its officers and employees from any claim, cause of action, damage, loss, or liability arising out of the condition of the property or its use by the organization or subsequent transferee. O R D one thousand one hundred and thirty-two two, Part, two thousand and ten, Analysis by breathing new life into these original pieces: The project maintains a tangible connection to the past, preserving memories and stories that have shaped the playground's unique character. This approach enriches the new playground's design, making it a living tribute to the many hands and hearts that contributed to the original build. Thoughtful stewardship also encourages donors and volunteers alike to feel a deeper sense of ownership and pride in the project, inspiring greater participation in both fundraising and the upcoming community build. Two, this focus on sustainability and respect for the community's legacy does more than preserve important artifacts; it helps strengthen the ties that make the park a treasured gathering place for future generations. Financial impact: There is no direct financial impact to the city if City Council approves the donation of specified pieces of the original Folsom Kids Play Park play structure to Folsom Kids Play For Generations, Inc. The donated pieces are intended to be sold by the organization, with the proceeds directed toward the future rebuilding of the play structure. Environmental review per California Environmental Quality Act, C E Q A Guidelines: Donation of existing playground pieces that would otherwise be hauled off to a landfill is exempt from environmental review since the project involves minor alterations to an existing public facility with negligible or no expansion of use. Attachments one. Resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and forty-four, A. Resolution approving the donation of specified pieces of the original Folsom Kids Play Castle Park play structure to Folsom Kids Play, For Generations, Inc. Two. Representative photo of wood identified to be used for fundraising three. Representative photos of ceramic tiles from commemorative wall and pillars four. Representative photos of nature-themed ceramic tiles from free-form concrete seat walls five. Representative photos of wood elements identified to be refurbished and potentially reused in the new playground design respectfully submitted, Kelly Gonzalez, Parks and Recreation Director three. Attachment one Resolution no. Eleven thousand four hundred and forty-four A. Resolution approving the donation of specified pieces of the original Folsom Kids Play Castle Park play structure to Folsom Kids Play, For Generations, Inc. Whereas, Folsom Kids Play Park, with its castle-themed wood play structure and ceramic tile artworks, was built in nineteen ninety-six and has served as an iconic, memorable, and beloved destination for play since it was built, and whereas, the wooden play structure has reached the effective end of its useful life and requires complete replacement, and whereas, the City Council of the City of Folsom agreed that the three hundred thousand dollar project budget shortfall would be provided by the five oh one, C, three, organization, Folsom Kids Play For Generations, Inc., and whereas, Folsom Kids Play For Generations, Inc. proposed turning specified parts of the original wooden play structure into yard totems to sell to donors, and whereas, Folsom Kids Play For Generations, Inc. proposed salvaging and refurbishing select wood elements and ceramic tiles from the original build, and whereas, there is no direct financial impact to the city if City Council approves the donation of specified pieces of the original Folsom Kids Play Park play structure to Folsom Kids Play For Generations, Inc. Whereas, proceeds from the sale of the yard totems would support F K P F G's fundraising efforts to help rebuild the play structure, and now, therefore, B I T resolved that the City Council of the City of Folsom authorizes the donation of specified pieces of the original Folsom Kids Play Castle Park play structure to Folsom Kids Play, For Generations, Incorporated passed and adopted this twelfth day of August, twenty twenty-five, by the following roll call vote: Eyes, knows, absent, abstain, council member, S. Council member, S. Council member, S. Council member, S. attest. attest. Sarah Aquino, Mayor. Resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and forty-four, page one of two. Krista Fremantle, City Clerk. Resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and forty-four, page two of two. Attachment two. Attachment three. Attachment four. Attachment five. Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date, August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Agenda section, Consent Calendar Subject. Resolution no one one four four six A resolution accepting sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollar in Department of Homeland Security Grant Funds awarded through the California Office of Emergency Services in appropriation of funds in the General Fund, Fund zero ten, from, Police Department Recommendation slash City Council Action Staff recommends that the city council pass and adopt Resolution no one one four four six A. Resolution accepting sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollar in Department of Homeland Security Grant Funds awarded through the California Office of Emergency Services in appropriation of funds in the General Fund, Fund zero ten. Background slash issue in February twenty twenty-five, the police department applied for a grant issued by the State Homeland Security Grant Program. The application was specifically tailored to provide funds to purchase night vision technology for the police department's SWAT team. In July twenty twenty-five, the department received the grant award letter designating sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars to be used for the purchase of this equipment. The Folsom Police Department's SWAT team seeks funding to procure night vision devices, N V Ds, to enhance operational effectiveness and officer safety during nighttime and low-light operations. These devices will provide critical visibility advantages, improving our ability to execute high-risk operations while minimizing risks to officers and the community. The requested funding will allow us to acquire and deploy N V Ds tailored to our team's needs, ensuring enhanced capabilities in search and rescue, warrant service, and crisis response scenarios. One, the Folsom Police Department's SWAT team is responsible for responding to high-risk incidents, including hostage situations, barricaded subjects, and violent offender apprehensions. A significant portion of these operations occur in low-light environments where visibility is compromised, increasing risks to officers and civilians. Currently, the team relies on standard lighting tools, which can expose officers' positions and limit their tactical effectiveness. The SWAT team is currently operating with night vision technology that is over twenty years old and significantly outdated by today's standards. The equipment provides low-resolution imagery and is limited to single-eye use, which severely restricts depth perception. This lack of spatial awareness makes it challenging for operators to navigate safely in low-light indoor environments, often resulting in unintended contact with objects or surroundings. These inadvertent contacts can compromise noise discipline and give away the team's position, reducing their tactical effectiveness during critical operations. The limitations of this outdated equipment pose a significant obstacle to maintaining stealth and operational safety. Acquiring night vision devices will enhance situational awareness in darkness, improve officer safety by reducing reliance on visible light sources, allow for more effective suspect tracking and perimeter security, and strengthen the team's ability to respond to emergencies without compromising their position. Policies slash rules. City Council Resolution eight thousand three hundred and sixty-seven states that grant applications, including any requiring an ongoing commitment of resources or staff, shall be reviewed and approved by the city council prior to submission. Analysis Night vision devices are not included in California's A B four hundred and eighty-one reporting requirements because they are not defined as military equipment under Government Code seventy seventy. A B four hundred and eighty-one outlines specific categories of equipment such as armored vehicles, drones, and firearms of point five zero caliber or greater that must be reported, governed by policies, and approved for use. Night vision devices, while potentially tactical in nature, do not meet the threshold of lethality, crowd control, or military application as outlined in the statute. As such, their acquisition and use by law enforcement do not fall under the scope of A B four eighty-one S public transparency and reporting mandates. The implementation of night vision technology within the department is expected to be seamless, as the SWAT team is already experienced in utilizing similar equipment. Training can be easily integrated into the team's existing monthly training schedule, avoiding the need for additional training costs. This technology supports the department's efforts to adapt to the evolving nature of tactical operations and aligns with California's mandated policies on de-escalation. By enhancing visibility in low-light environments, night vision devices allow two operators to maintain time and distance, improving their ability to safely communicate, gather intelligence, and assess potential threats without initiating immediate engagement. Financial impact. The Department of Homeland Security awarded through the California Office of Emergency Services funding for the city of Folsom in the amount of sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars to purchase night vision devices and does not require matching funds from the city. These funds will include all the required equipment and technical support. There are no additional anticipated training costs. If accepted, the funding award would increase revenue estimates and appropriations by sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollar in the General Fund, Fund zero ten. Costs would be funded initially through the General Fund, Fund zero ten, and reimbursed by the grant. Attachments one. Resolution no one one four four six A resolution accepting sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollar in Department of Homeland Security Grant Funds awarded through the California Office of Emergency Services in appropriation of funds in the General Fund, Fund zero ten. Two. Grant Award Letter Submitted, Randy Ullaberry, Interim Chief of Police. Three attachment one resolution no. Eleven thousand four hundred and forty-six A resolution accepting sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollar in Department of Homeland Security Grant Funds awarded through the California Office of Emergency Services in appropriation of funds in the General Fund, Fund zero ten, whereas, the Department of Homeland Security through the California Office of Emergency Services offers grants to fund frontline law enforcement services, and whereas, the grant funding available to the city of Folsom for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six is sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars, and whereas, these funds are separate and apart from the proposed allocations from the city's general fund and an additional appropriation is needed, and whereas, the chief of police has requested to allocate and appropriate these funds for the purchase of night vision technology, now, therefore, B I T resolved that the city council of the city of Folsom hereby authorizes the city manager to accept the Department of Homeland Security Grant and use of the funding in accordance with the request of the chief of police to purchase night vision technology, and now, therefore, B I T further resolved that the finance director is authorized to increase revenue estimates and expenditure appropriations by sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollar in the General Fund, Fund zero ten, to the police department budget in fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six. Passed and adopted this twelfth day of August twenty twenty-five, by the following roll call vote, eyes, knows, absent, abstain, council member, S. council member, S. council member, S. council member, S. Sarah Aquino, Mayor. Attest. Krista Fremantle, City Clerk. Resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and forty-six, page one of one. Attachment two. Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date, August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Agenda section, Consent Calendar Subject. Resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and forty-eight A resolution. Rejecting all bids for the Bidwell Street Storm Drain Replacement Project, Project number two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine from, Public Works Department Recommendation slash City Council Action. The Public Works Department recommends that the city council pass and adopt Resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and forty-eight, A resolution rejecting all bids for the Bidwell Street Storm Drain Replacement Project, Project number two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine. Background slash issue. The city of Folsom currently owns and maintains a storm drain system along Bidwell Street that collects runoff from portions of Riley Street, Comstock Drive, Wool Street, and Decatur Street as well as adjacent residential and commercial private properties. The storm drain line along Bidwell Street consists of an eighteen-inch pipe running north to south, joining with a second eighteen-inch at the intersection of Bidwell Street and Decatur Street, and connecting east. Most segments of the pipe are corrugated metal pipe, C M P. In twenty twenty, during routine storm drain inspections, the Public Works Department determined that a section of storm drain line along Bidwell Street south of Wool Street had never been constructed, and the line was plugged. During rain events, accumulated runoff bubbles up out of a slotted manhole lid and into the adjacent unpaved roadside ditch. Over the years, this has caused erosion along the edge of the pavement and carried sediment into the next downstream drain inlet located at Decatur Street. On October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, the city council approved Resolution number ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven authorizing a Green Means Go grant application under the capital category for the Bidwell Street drainage improvement project to address the identified issue. The city received a full grant award from Sacramento Area Council of Governments, S A C U G, and on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, city council approved Resolution number eleven thousand and twenty-seven to accept the grant. Acceptance of the three hundred and five thousand dollars fully funded capital grant award provides funding for the replacement of approximately five hundred linear feet of the eighteen-inch storm drain line, associated manholes, and additional curb and gutter along the length from Wool Street to Decatur Street to prevent any future erosion. Policies slash rules. Section two point three six point one eight zero, Award of Contracts of the Folsom Municipal Code states, in part, that the city council may reject any O R all bids or proposals when it is for good cause and in the best interests of the city. Analysis City staff completed the design of the project and advertised the bid package for construction on virtual bid on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, with bid opening on July ninth, twenty twenty-five. The city received only one bid, as summarized below. Central Valley Engineering and Asphalt, Inc., two hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The engineer's estimate of probable cost was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the portion of the grant authorized for the construction phase is three hundred thousand dollars. During bid analysis, staff determined that there were issues with the bidding platform that discouraged other contractors from bidding the project. This was the first attempt by the city to utilize virtual bid, and the platform was chosen due to its ability to accept electronic bids. Staff believed that the flexibility to allow electronic bids could increase interest from contractors and increase the bidding pool. Unfortunately, while there were other listed plan holders, the city only received one bid. After reaching out to other contractors that have worked with the Public Works Department in the past, several reported that they did not receive the notification through virtual bid or associated plan rooms, and other contractors were not able to easily navigate the platform to submit the required forms and information. Based on this information, staff would like to reject all bids and rebid the project in September using another bidding platform that has been used successfully in the past. The Green Means Go grant expenditure date is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, so there is minimal concern of not meeting the delivery deadline even with rebidding the project. Financial impact. While the single bid came in below the authorized grant amount, it was still above the engineer's estimate of probable cost and given the lack of additional bidders, staff recommends rejecting all bids and rebidding the project. Staff expects to rebid the project in September twenty twenty-five and begin construction in the fall. Environmental review. This project is a rehabilitation of existing infrastructure and therefore is categorically exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, C E Q A, Guidelines, Section fifteen thousand three hundred and one. Attachment Resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and forty-eight, A resolution rejecting all bids for the Bidwell Street Storm Drain Replacement Project, Project number two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine submitted. Marcus Yasutaki, Interim Public Works Director. Resolution no. Eleven thousand four hundred and forty-eight A resolution rejecting all bids for the Bidwell Street Storm Drain Replacement Project, Project no. Two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine. Whereas, the city of Folsom desires to repair and rehabilitate the existing storm drainage infrastructure along Bidwell Street from Wool Street to Decatur Street, and whereas, the project was advertised for construction on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and bids were received on July ninth, twenty twenty-five, with Central Valley Engineering and Asphalt Incorporated being the only, and therefore lowest, responsive bidder at two hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and whereas, the engineer's estimate of probable cost was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and whereas, Green Means Go. Grant funding in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars is budgeted and available for use on the construction phase of the project with a grant expenditure end date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and whereas, staff is proposing to rebid the project in September twenty twenty-five, utilizing a different and more familiar bidding platform, now, therefore, B I T resolved that the city council of the city of Folsom rejects all bids for the Bidwell Street Storm Drain Replacement Project, Project number two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine. Passed and adopted this twelfth day of August twenty twenty-five, by the following roll call vote, eyes, knows, absent, abstain, council member, S. council member, S. council member, S. council member, S. attest. Krista Fremantle, City Clerk. Sarah Aquino, Mayor. Resolution number eleven thousand four hundred and forty-eight, page one of one. Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date, August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Agenda section, New Business Subject. Ordinance number one thousand three hundred and fifty-five, an ordinance of the city of Folsom. Adding Chapter eight point three nine, Unlawful Behavioral Nuisances, to the Folsom Municipal Code to prevent, remove, and abate behavioral nuisances that negatively affect people, properties, and businesses in the community. Introduction and First Reading, from, City Attorney's Office Recommendation slash City Council Action Staff recommends that the city council introduce and conduct the first reading of Ordinance number one thousand three hundred and fifty-five, an ordinance of the city of Folsom adding Chapter eight point three nine, Unlawful Behavioral Nuisances, to the Folsom Municipal Code to prevent, remove, and abate behavioral nuisances that negatively affect people, properties, and businesses in the community. Background slash issue. The city's code enforcement and law enforcement officers were recently called upon by a resident to assist abating a public nuisance that had existed in one of the residential houses in that neighborhood for years. The criminal elements at this property festered where certain individuals congregated, lived, and carried out various illegal activities day and night, such as, for example, the sale, purchase, transport, distribution, and use of illegal drugs and controlled substances. The bad actors intimidated the neighbors through aggressive interactions, foul and threatening languages, hostile and menacing gestures from their C O conspirators, and letting aggressive dogs loose in the neighborhood. All those behaviors negatively affected the peace, enjoyment, health, and safety of the neighbors in that neighborhood. The Folsom Municipal Code has a nuisance provision that pertains to maintenance and upkeep of physical properties, but nothing addressing behavioral nuisances that threaten the health, safety, and peaceful enjoyment of people, properties, and businesses. One policy slash rule. Under Section two point one two of the city charter, amendments to the Folsom Municipal Code require review and approval by the city council. Analysis staff proposed to add a chapter to the Folsom Municipal Code to specifically address behavioral nuisances on any property in the city such as, one, illegal sale, use, possession, distribution, or transport of controlled substances or other illegal drugs and substances; two, gathering, or coming and going, of people who have an intent to purchase, use, distribute, sell, or transport controlled substances on or from the property; three, prostitution; four, unlawful activities of a criminal street. Gang; five, making or continuing, or causing to be made and continued, or any loud unnecessary or unusual noise which disturbs the peace and quiet of the neighborhood, or which causes discomfort or annoyance to any reasonable person of normal sensitiveness residing on the property or in the area; six, unlawful discharging of a firearm or brandishing of a weapon by any person; seven, unlawful fireworks displays; eight, frequent response by the Folsom Police Department to the real property or the adjacent area, but not the real property of another, as a result of any person or persons causing any combination of the following calls as indicated in the Folsom Police Department Incident Report, A. Animal disturbances, including but not limited to competitive fighting between animals; B. Violent criminal acts, charged or not, including, but not limited to, rape, assault, battery, homicide, or shooting; C. Making hostile or aggressive gestures or threats that disturb the peaceful enjoyment or another person; D. Illegal consumption of intoxicants in public view; two. E. Gaming activities; F. Juvenile disturbances. The proposed ordinance seeks to hold the property owner responsible to mitigate and abate the nuisance as described. If the owner fails to do so after receiving notice from the city, the proposed ordinance allows the city to proceed with abatement actions through administrative citations and other lawful remedies. The city's cost and expenses will be a lien against the property to repay the city's taxpayers for the expenses incurred to abate a public nuisance. Financial impact. No immediate financial impact is expected from these proposed ordinance. Environmental review. The action is exempt under Section one five zero six one, B, three, the common sense rule of the California Environmental Quality Act, C E Q A, because the proposed addition of Chapter eight point three nine to the Folsom Municipal Code has no potential to cause significant effects on the environment. Attachment one. Ordinance number one thousand three hundred and fifty-five, an ordinance of the city of Folsom adding Chapter eight point three nine, unlawful behavioral nuisances, to the Folsom Municipal Code to prevent, remove, and abate behavioral nuisances that negatively affect people, properties, and businesses in the community respectfully submitted, Stephen Wong, City Attorney. Three ordinance no. One thousand three hundred and fifty-five, an ordinance of the city of Folsom adding Chapter eight point three nine, unlawful behavioral nuisances, to the Folsom Municipal Code to prevent, remove, and abate behavioral nuisances that negatively affect people, properties, and businesses in the community. The city council of the city of Folsom does hereby ordain as follows. Section one. Purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to add Chapter eight point three nine, unlawful behavioral nuisances, to the Folsom Municipal Code to prevent and allow code enforcement and slash or law enforcement to remove and abate harmful behaviors that typically associate with crimes and create blight and decay in the community. Section two. Addition to Code Chapter eight point three nine, unlawful behavioral nuisances, is hereby added to the Folsom Municipal Code to read as follows. Chapter eight point three nine, unlawful behavioral nuisances. Sections, eight point three nine point zero one, zero eight point three nine point zero two, zero eight point three nine point zero three, zero eight point three nine point zero four, zero eight point three nine point zero five, zero eight point three nine point zero six, zero eight point three nine point zero seven, zero eight point three nine point zero eight, zero eight point three nine point zero nine, zero eight point three nine point one, zero zero eight point three nine point one one. Finding and Purpose. Definitions. Unlawful behavioral nuisances. Declaration of public nuisance. Notification of nuisance. Authority to issue administrative citation. Authority to initiate administrative remedies. Abatement by city. Assessment lien. Alternative actions available. Violations. Eight point three nine point zero one zero. Finding and purpose. A. Certain behaviors of persons on property within the city are injurious to residents, property owners, and businesses in the community, and as such constitute a public nuisance. Such public nuisances can create conditions that negatively affect one's health, or be indecent or offensive to the senses, or contribute to visual blight, so as to interfere with the safety and enjoyment of life or property by people in the community or neighborhood. The abatement of such behavioral nuisances is important to the city in its fight against blight, decay, deterioration, and crime. Ordinance number one thousand three hundred and fifty-five, page one of seven. B. The owners of real properties within the city are responsible for monitoring their properties and for taking appropriate action if a nuisance exists thereon, whether that nuisance is created by whether that nuisance is created by existing physical conditions or by nuisance-creating behaviors, or the combination of conditions. Many nuisances can be avoided with active property management. Lack of proper management of real property can create an environment conducive to behaviors that can become a nuisance with repetition and lack of abatement and corrective measures. If a property owner does not fulfill his or her responsibilities, it is necessary for the safety, health, and welfare of the neighborhoods, and the city as a whole, that the city be able to undertake abatement action. See Because of the profound impact and effect behavioral nuisances have on the community, individuals, and crime, the City Council, in adopting this chapter finds the civil penalties imposed for a violation of this chapter are justified and necessary to protect the health, property, and integrity of this community. D Nothing in this chapter exempts property owners from compliance with state, federal, or local laws, including, but not limited to, laws on housing, eviction, retaliatory conduct, discriminatory conduct, or invasion of privacy. E The purpose of this chapter is, one, to set forth and enforce minimum standards relating to the management of activities conducted or conditions on real property to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and, two, to put in place remedies which will permit the city to take timely, effective, efficient administrative or other legal action against property owners who permit or suffer nuisance-creating behaviors or conditions to occur on their properties on a continuing basis, in order to compel such owners to abate the nuisance-creating behaviors or conditions and control the environment, both physical and behavioral, on such real properties. F The provisions of this chapter are complementary, cumulative, supplementary, and additional to any other legal remedies available, whether found in this code, state, or federal laws, regulations, or case law. G It is not the intent nor purpose of this chapter to subject owners or managers to any legal liability resulting from a tenant's actions away from the owner's or manager's own property unless it can be shown that the problem tenant is also creating a nuisance or committing a crime on the owner's or manager's property. Eight Point Three Nine Point Zero Two Zero Definitions. Public nuisance means the creation or maintenance of any behavior or condition upon public or private property which is injurious to health, or indecent or offensive to the senses, or an obstruction to the free use of property, or a detriment to property values, or contributes to visual blight, so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property of an entire community or neighborhood, or by any considerable number of persons. Ordinance Number One Thousand Three Hundred and Fifty-five, Page two of seven Building means any structure used or intended for supporting or sheltering any use or occupancy and includes any house, garage, duplex, apartment, condominium, stock, cooperative, or other residential structure, and includes all retail, commercial, and industrial structures. City Manager means the city manager or his slash her designees. Frequent means such response is occurring more than one and one-half times than the average number of such responses for property of a similar size and character. Owner means any person owning property, as shown on the last equalized assessment roll for property taxes, or other person having control or possession of the property. Person means any individual, partnership, corporation, business, association, or other organization, however formed. Property means all property within the city and includes any building located on such property. Tenant or occupant means any person or group of persons occupying the whole or part of a building or land, whether or not pursuant to a written or oral lease, tenancy at will, tenancy at sufferance, or otherwise. Eight Point Three Nine Point Zero Three Zero Unlawful Behavioral Nuisances. It is hereby declared a public nuisance and a violation of this chapter for the owner, whether through the owner or owner's agent, la cie, sub la sir, sub la cie, or occupant of any property in the city to permit, with actual or constructive knowledge, any of the following activities or behavior to occur on the property of the owner: A The illegal sale, use, possession, distribution, or Transport of Controlled Substances or Other Illegal Drugs and Substances; B The gathering, or coming and going, of People who have an intent to purchase, use, distribute, sell, or transport controlled substances on or from the property; C The occurrence of prostitution; D Unlawful Activities of a Criminal Street Gang as defined in the California Penal Code; E The making or continuing, or Causing to be made and Continued, or Any Loud Unnecessary or Unusual Noise Which Disturbs the Peace and Quiet of the Neighborhood, or Which Causes Discomfort or Annoyance to Any Reasonable Person of Normal Sensitiveness Residing on the property or in the area; F The unlawful discharging of a firearm or brandishing of a weapon by any person. Ordinance Number One Thousand Three Hundred and Fifty-five, Page three of seven Guarini's Unlawful Fireworks Displays. H The frequent response by the Folsom Police Department to the real property or the adjacent area, but not the real property of another, as a result of any person or persons causing any combination of the following calls as indicated in the Folsom Police Department Incident Report: One Animal Disturbances, including but not limited to competitive fighting between animals; Two Violent Criminal Acts, charged or not, including, but not limited to, rape, assault, battery, homicide, or Shooting; Three Making Hostile or Aggressive Gestures or Threats That Disturb the Peaceful Enjoyment of Another Person; Four Illegal Consumption of Intoxicants in Public View; Five Gaming Activities; Six Juvenile Disturbances. Eight Point Three Nine Point Zero Four Zero Declaration of Public Nuisance. Any behavior on property in violation of the foregoing section Eight Point Three Nine Point Zero Three Zero is declared to be a public nuisance and shall be abated pursuant to the procedures set forth in this chapter or elsewhere in the Municipal Code. The procedures for abatement set forth in this chapter shall not be exclusive and shall not in any manner limit or restrict the city from enforcing other city ordinances or abating public nuisances in any other manner provided by law. Eight Point Three Nine Point Zero Five Zero Notification of Nuisance. Whenever the city manager or his or her designee determines that any behavior described in section Eight Point Three Nine Point Zero Three Zero exists on any property within the city, the city manager shall give notice to the owner of the property, and if known the person responsible for causing the violation if that is not the owner, stating the section, S, being violated. Such notice shall set forth a reasonable time limit, in no event less than ten calendar days, for correcting the violation, S, and may set forth suggested methods of correcting them. Such notice shall be served upon the owner in person or by certified mail. Eight Point Three Nine Point Zero Six Zero Authority to Issue Administrative Citation. In the event the owner or person responsible for the violation shall fail, neglect, or refuse to comply with the notice of order to abate, the city manager-designee shall have the authority to Ordinance Number One Thousand Three Hundred and Fifty-five, Page four of seven issue an administrative citation in accordance with the provisions of Chapters One Point Zero Eight and One Point Zero Nine of this code. Eight Point Three Nine Point Zero Seven Zero Authority to Initiate Administrative Remedies. In the event the owner or person responsible for the violation, S, shall fail, neglect, or refuse to comply with notice of order to abate, or to respond to the issuance of an administrative citation, the city manager shall have the authority to initiate administrative remedies in accordance with the provisions of Chapter One Point Zero Nine of this code, in addition to all other legal remedies, criminal or civil, which may be pursued by the city to address any violation of this code. Eight Point Three Nine Point Eight Zero Abatement by City. A If the nuisance is not abated within the specified abatement period, the city manager shall abate, or cause to be abeded, the nuisance utilizing city employees or private contractor. The cost of abatement and administration for same shall be billed to the owner, and be due and payable within thirty days thereafter. Administrative costs shall include personnel costs, costs incurred in documenting the nuisance, costs of notices, specifications and contracts, inspections, and costs of printing and mailing required by this chapter. B In the event the property owner disputes the cost of abatement and administration, the owner shall give notice to the city clerk of such objection and the clerk shall set the matter for hearing before the city council within thirty days after receipt of said notice, at which time the council will hear evidence presented by the owner and staff and determine whether or not the cost of abatement and administration are reasonable. The determination of the city council shall be final and not appealable. Eight Point Three Nine Point Zero Nine Zero Assessment Lean. In the event the costs to abate the nuisance are not paid by the owner, the city shall prepare a special assessment against the subject property requiring the abatement of nuisance. Assessment will be implemented upon recordation in the office of the county recorder of a notice of lean on the property for the amount of the assessment, or to cause the amounts of the respective assessments to be added to the next regular tax bills levied against the affected properties. Eight Point Three Nine Point One Zero Zero Alternative Actions Available. Nothing in this chapter shall be deemed to prevent the city from commencing a civil or criminal proceeding to abate a public nuisance or from pursuing other means available under provisions of applicable ordinances or state laws to correct and abate health and safety hazards created by the behavioral nuisances in addition to or as alternatives to the proceedings set forth in this chapter. Eight Point Three Nine Point One One Zero Violations. Ordinance Number One Thousand Three Hundred and Fifty-five, Page five of seven A. The owner or other person having charge or control of any such building, structure, or property who maintains any public nuisance defined in this chapter, or who violates any order of abatement made pursuant to this chapter is guilty of an infraction. B Any person who removes or defaces any notice or order posted as required by this chapter is guilty of an infraction. C No person shall obstruct, impede, or interfere with any representative of the city or city contractor engaged in mitigating, removing, or abating a nuisance pursuant to the provisions of this chapter, or in performing any necessary act preliminary or incidental to such work as authorized or directed pursuant to the provisions of this chapter. Section Three Scope Except as Set Forth in this Ordinance, all other provisions of the Folsom Municipal Code shall remain in full force and effect. Section Four Severability If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase in this ordinance or any part thereof is for any reason held to be unconstitutional, invalid, or ineffective by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect the validity or effectiveness of the remaining portions of this ordinance or any part thereof. The City Council declares that it would have passed each section irrespective of the fact that any one or more section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase be declared unconstitutional, invalid, or ineffective. Section Five No mandatory duty This ordinance is not intended to and shall not be construed or given effect in a manner that imposes upon the city or any officer or employee thereof a mandatory duty of care towards persons and property within or without the city, so as to provide a basis of civil liability for damages, except as otherwise imposed by law. Section Six Effective Date This ordinance shall become effective thirty, thirty, days from and after its passage and adoption, provided it is published in full or in summary within twenty, twenty, days after its adoption in a newspaper of general circulation in the city. This ordinance was introduced and the title thereof read at the regular meeting of the City Council on August twelfth, twenty twenty five and the second reading occurred at the regular meeting of the City Council on underscore 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 twenty twenty five. Ordinance Number One Thousand Three Hundred and Fifty-five, Page six of seven On a Motion by Council Member Seconded by Council Member, the foregoing ordinance was passed and adopted by the City Council of the City of Folsom, State of California, this underscore 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 day of underscore 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 twenty twenty five, by the following roll call vote: Eyes, knows, absent, abstain, council member, S council member, S council member, S council member, S attest. Sarah Aquino, Mayor Ordinance. Number One Thousand Three Hundred and Fifty-five, Page seven of seven Folsom City Council Staff Report Meeting Date, August twelfth, twenty twenty five Agenda Section, New Business Subject, California Department of Transportation Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program for a Sustainable Transit Connections to Health Services Planning and Feasibility Study Contract I Resolution Number Eleven Thousand Four Hundred and Forty-two A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Folsom and the Sacramento Regional Transit District Regarding the Sustainable Transit Connections to Health Services Planning and Feasibility Study Two. Resolution Number Eleven Thousand Four Hundred and Forty-three A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with Fair and Peers for a Sustainable Transit Connections to Health Services Planning and Feasibility Study Contract From, Community Development Department Recommendation slash City Council Action Staff Respectfully Recommends that the City Council Approve, I Resolution Number Eleven Thousand Four Hundred and Forty-two A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Folsom and the Sacramento Regional Transit District Regarding the Sustainable Transit Connections to Health Services Planning and Feasibility Study Two. Resolution Number Eleven Thousand Four Hundred and Forty-three A Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with Fair and Peers for a Sustainable Transit Connections to Health Services Planning and Feasibility Study Contract One Background slash Issue In January twenty twenty four, the City Council Adopted Resolution Number Eleven Thousand One Hundred and Fifty-five Authorizing Staff, in partnership with the Sacramento Regional Transit District, SACRT, to apply for the Caltrans FI twenty twenty four slash twenty-five Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program. The grant application proposed a planning and feasibility study focused on expanding transit access to major health services and key destinations in the Folsom Plan area. Following the application, Caltrans conditionally awarded two hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollar in July twenty twenty four, with the city serving as the lead applicant. The grant award includes a required local match of thirty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, which SACRT will partially fulfill through non-reimbursable staff time valued at five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. In August twenty twenty four, the City Council Approved Resolution Number Eleven Thousand Two Hundred and Forty-nine, authorizing the city manager or their designee to execute related grant agreements and formally accept the full award. A Restricted Grant Agreement was finalized in October twenty twenty four to initiate the project, and an administrative amendment finalizing budget details was approved in July of twenty twenty five. Partnership with SACRT and consultant procurement The City of Folsom, as the lead agency, is responsible for contract administration, while SACRT, as the partner agency, will support the project through initial transit route design, implementation strategy, and final service plan. To clearly define roles and funding responsibilities, the city and SACRT plan to enter into a Memorandum of Understanding, M O, which will outline SacRIT's local match commitment and specific project contributions. In addition, an experienced transit consulting firm is necessary to provide comprehensive support services, including project management, data analysis, technical expertise, stakeholder coordination, and community outreach. The consultant's involvement will ensure effective implementation across all facets of the project. In March twenty twenty five, the city issued a request for proposals, R F P, to identify a qualified consulting firm to prepare the study. Fair and Peers was selected based on their comprehensive understanding of the project and their proposed approach. City staff now seeks city council authorization for the city manager to, one, execute a M O with SACRT to formalize its non-reimbursable staff contribution, valued at five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, as part of its local match, along with up to sixty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollar in grant funding for additional staff support directly related to the project; two, execute a professional services agreement with Fair and Peers for an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars to provide consulting services for the project. Policy slash Rule City Council Authorization is required to enter into an interagency agreement. In accordance with Chapter Two Point Three Six of the Folsom Municipal Code, professional services contracts of seventy-five thousand and forty-nine dollar or greater shall be approved by the city council. To Analyze the Sustainable Transit Connections to Health Services Planning and Feasibility Study, in partnership with SACRT, aims to proactively plan for sustainable transit connections that will support the planned future growth of the city. The goal is to integrate various transportation modes, enhance transit station connections, improve access to medical facilities, and provide easy access to regional transit services in Folsom and the vicinity. This initiative will increase accessibility to the regional transit system for all, including older adults and people with disabilities, reduce traffic congestion, lower greenhouse gas emissions, and improve community health.